I'd like to call to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of September 22, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have the roll call, I want to call on Counselor Gerlach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a really quick introduction to welcome some guests to this evening's Town Council meeting. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the Weebloos Den of local Cub Scout PAC 10, which draws families from across Tiverton and Little Compton. Warm welcome to them. And I'd like to recognize some of the leaders here. Mark Nimrofsky, who is the Cub Master for PAC 10, and Laura Mello and Larry Andrade, who are Den Leaders for the Weebloos Den. They're here this evening working on their Citizenship Activity Pin, which is a requirement for them to achieve their Weebloos Badge, which is the last step before they head out to the great big wide world of Boy Scouts. So, thank you, and we hope you guys learned something.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Aruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counsel Lambert.
Present.
Counsel Rodrick.
Present.
Counsel DiMediris.
Present.
Counsel Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
The consent agenda: Approval of the regular council minute meeting minutes of September 8, 2014. Counsel Aruda abstains. Approval of the executive session minutes, September 8, 2014. Counsel Aruda abstains. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Art Council, Cemetery Commission, Zoning Board of Review, City Planning Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Review, Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau August Report. Correspondence received and filed: Evan Smith, Discover Newport Audit Report for year ended March 31, 2014, available in the Clerk's office. Cheryl Ann Cardinelli, co-founder of We Are Group HUG organization requesting support. Sally Black, Liaison of Tiverton Prevention Coalition Regarding E. Boarding LICSW Counselor. Treasurer Denise Sorot, Distribution of Budget and Revenue Reports for August 2014. Aquinic Island Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution Request Approval of the Proclamation for American Indian Heritage Month in November. Attorney Leary Requesting Approval of Stop Sign at Intersection of Contral and Fish Road Referred to Police Chief and DPW Director. John A. Paglirini Jr., Esquire Enforcement of Public Improvement Guarantees for William Button Reserve Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 45-23-46 Referred to Planning Board Administrative Officer Kate Michaud and Planning Board Assistant Solicitor Ruggiero. Chief Blakie Proposed Traffic Ordinance Section 78 Through Traffic on Jilly Hill Road Scheduling of Public Hearing on October 27. Kate Michaud Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee Progress Report. Any items to be removed?
Mr. President, I'd just like to just quickly pull out CA 7, just for a quick question.
Second. I don't have to do that.
Any others to be removed? CA 5. Okay, I will entertain a motion on the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Gerlach.
Yeah, real quick, and I know this has been referred to the planning board, but I did take a drive down there this weekend to look at this sinkhole, and I was just curious what, if anything, is being done or can be done in the interim around that. That was pretty nasty down there, and I didn't know, just, I don't know if anyone can answer that, or...
Mr. Balucci.
We've been watching over that sinkhole probably three months now. I've notified the planning board directly. They've contacted the developer. I've notified the developer personally directly. He knows all about it. He's in the process of walking away from the project, and I think the planning board in the town is in the process of moving forward to gain the surety money that he's put up in trying to finish the project. Right now, it's in limbo. I don't want to touch it. It's private property. I don't want to open up a liability. Yet, there is, he's been notified that it's his liability. It's his road. It's private property, and he's responsible for whether he walks away or not. So, I think that's where we're at. Unless you decide to do something else, I can certainly go down there with my crew and fix it, if so directed, but it's in our town ordinances that when a subdivision is under construction, it's kind of against the rules for the DPW to go in and do any work. That's our town ordinances, so I don't know how you want to handle it.
Well, it's been referred to the planning board, so we will wait to hear from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion regarding CA 7.
Mr. President, may residents speak prior to?
It's not an open hearing.
Well, I believe I have the right to pull it off the agenda, and it'll become a regular item.
He just pulled it off.
It's an item that's pulled off the consent agenda for the discussion of the council.
Counsel.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
It's up to the council's discretion whether to hear public testimony on it. A separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council or member of the public so requests. In the event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, consideration considered in its normal sequence of agenda. So... That's correct, but that still doesn't mean that the public, the public does not have the right to speak on every item. Only the public hearings understood that, whether it's on consent agenda item or not.
I would like to hear from Attorney at Paglirini. I don't know if the rest of you feel the same.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to listen to Mr. Paglirini. I don't know if we need a motion, but just to make it official, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, counsel. Many of the residents are in attendance this evening, and a 90-day delay on this sinkhole is putting our residents at peril. There's property that are under construction. Large trucks are driving on this road. This sinkhole is approximately six foot by six foot undermining the entire asphalt of the road. It very well may be a water leak that's causing it. However, it needs attention. The town is on notice, and notwithstanding the fact that there's been no acceptance of the road, you're going to be a named plaintiff when somebody gets hurt. In addition, it is our understanding, and this was not referred to the planning board, it was referred to the administrative officer and to the solicitor, but it is our understanding that earlier this year, the planning board gave back some of the surety, and that this surety is in deficit right now, and it's less than half the required funds to finish this road. So, you need, beyond sending it to the solicitor to collect on this, you need to find out if there's a systemic problem with surety issues in this community, because there's no way that $89,000 should have been given back to the developer earlier this year if that is indeed a correct position, and we don't have those records to prove that, but they need your review, notwithstanding this is under the jurisdiction of the planning board, because we've been told that this is not the first subdivision that this is happening to. There's missing signage on the road, street trees, survey bounds, the binder is failing. There are numerous, the drainage has not been attended to, and I sent you all an email over the weekend, and I attached that this subdivision right now is paying $162,000 a year in property taxes and has been for numerous years, and for the residents to be subjected to particularly a sinkhole, and it is a dangerous sinkhole. We have many small children riding bicycles, but more concern is we have cement trucks coming up and down this road, et cetera. This cannot wait. In addition to that, there's concern about this winter and snow plowing. The developer last two seasons has done a haphazard job of plowing one lane down the middle of the road. The question is, what happens if he has indeed walked away? Who's going to be plowing the roads this winter? So, this isn't something that we want to have a study done on. We'd like to know what the action is going to be at the next council meeting, if you would be so kind. Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on CA 7.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? CA 5. We received a request from the Daughters of the American Revolution Aquinic Island Chapter for a proclamation, which reads, "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation is significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, therefore be it resolved, the Tiverton Town Council encourages all Tiverton residents to join the Tiverton Town Council in recognizing November as American Indian Heritage Month. For the Town Council, Edward A. Rodrick, Town Council President, September 22, 2014." I will entertain a motion on CA 5.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you just make a correction on the proclamation itself? It's Edward A.
He's Joseph now.
Joseph, Joseph now.
Give me a moment.
No, that was it. The open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. I'm just going to say, Mr. Belli, you're on there. This is an agenda item, so it will come up as an agenda item, so we won't take it separately.
You will allow people to speak on this item?
Well, since we've already allowed it, I will allow it, but please be brief. Barbara Pelletier.
As you saw by the reports from Evan Smith, tourism is still a growing industry in the area. We do really, really need a hotel. They're going to start building the one in Bristol shortly, but on a positive note, at last Tuesday's meeting, Susan Gill brought up the fact, appealed to the board at Newport, of the Newport Discover Newport Council, that they should support the building of the crossing at the Souza Road. So, I assume EDC and with the blessing of you guys is supporting the project, so I don't know, but I hope you are. So, let's hope for the crossing to be building, the hotel. October is Farmers' Month, and as you know, I've been trying to get something positive going every so often. So, October is Farmers' Month. It's also Astronomy Month. So, actually, I was talking to Nancy Mello, and we thought maybe October 10th, because that is the closest time to it, to the solstice or whatever it is. BCC will host anyone from Tiverton on Friday night at 7 o'clock for a planetarium presentation. So, if you so desire to go and see a planetarium presentation for free, like the Boy Scouts or anybody, any families, anything, do come. October is also Farmers' Month, and we really, really, the farmers in this community are a very, very important thread to what we are, and it's not just the farms, it's farm stands, and it's fields, it's the fishermen, the horse farmers, it's the big ones like Helga's Turkey Farm and Aruda's, but it's the teeny little stands and the people who sell eggs and all of that. So, I was thinking, could we make a list of the farmers, active farmers, and I don't really know where we could access it, maybe the tax collector or somebody, and send them thank you notes, or at least proclaim them, thank you? I think that would be a good thing, and maybe we could have a little display at town hall where they can advertise their product or anything like that. I think that would be a good thing. We could even maybe have Nancy bring Call Hogman for fishermen.
(Laughter).
And maybe we can find representation of a cow and some, you know, make a little display, maybe, you know, be a little special. Next year, we can expand to pig races and have Hamlet and Chop Licks or whatever race, but this year, I'd be happy if you did a little bit. In November, as I heard you proclaimed as American Indian Month, and we do have a lot of American Indian history here, maybe, just maybe, with the school and the librarians and that, we can come up with a little three-page folder that we can photocopy and hand out about our American Indian heritage, and it would be an ongoing learning experience for everyone. We can hand it out at the schools and do that kind of thing, and I think that might all be on a positive. And I know it's not going to be perfect, and I know it's easier to say we'll do it better next year, but we'll start, and a start is better than nothing. And then the big thing is that Christmas is coming, or the holidays, to be politically correct, are coming, and in order to get the decorations up in a pretty and mindful manner or whatever, I would like to appeal to anybody who would like to volunteer with lights or things like that to also come forward, let yourself be known, and we can decorate, because we don't really have the advantage of a merchants group who does it for us. Bristol and Warren has a merchants group. I thought we were going to get one, but they just went, poof. I don't know, they haven't organized yet. They were going to be the outgrowth of economic development, but I don't know what happened to them, but, so the private citizens, I think, should just get together and do something, and all for the good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
At this time, I would, I move that we take the item under, Item C1, under Advertised Public Hearings, Bethany Shaker, Riptide Sports Grill. Move this up at this point and take it under consideration.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we're now beginning the continuation of the public hearing regarding Bethany Shaker, Riptide Sports Grill, One Bay Street, continued from the September 8 meeting. Request approval of BV liquor license, advertised public hearing, subject to meeting all legal requirements, objections from residents in the Bay Street area, and materials distributed to the council by solicitor on September 8, on file with the clerk. Ms. Shaker?
Good evening. My name's Court Chappell. I'm here on behalf of Bethany Shaker.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you pull the mics forward? Yeah, repeat your name again, I'm sorry.
Court Chappell. Our office is at 171 Chase Road in Portland, Rhode Island.
Yeah, I hear her back here.
Tap the mic. Okay. You have to really speak up.
Yeah.
We've got a wonderful system here.
You have to remind me if you're telling.
Okay. Ms. Shaker, do you have something you want to start?
My understanding is continued from last meeting, and a number of handouts were given here. That raised a number of issues, and what I would like to do is...
Please speak up, I'm sorry.
Do you want to see if that mic is there?
Try that mic. Is that me? Yes.
All right. Those documents that we read raised a number of issues, and I certainly understand the council's concern. With that, there needs to be a brief explanation. Ultimately, what I'd like to do is to seek a continuance, to get more information from the neighborhood and to you, and I understand with the looks, but I want you to understand something. I met Bethany Shaker five or six months ago when I was approached, then she said that she had found a piece of property where she wished to operate a family restaurant, and told me that it was in the area that was contaminated, and we began to look at that property. Because it had not been occupied for a number of years, we went to the Tiverton Zoning Board, and we began to ask the questions about the rights to reopen it, and there were discussions and debates at that time with the, first, the current building inspector, and then I think ultimately the opinion came, I'm sorry, from the past building inspector, and then ultimately, I think, the decision came from the current building inspector before we spent money and before we purchased this, that in fact, there was no intent to abandon the property. We had to show them pictures of all the restaurant facilities still inside. There was an issue of some equipment being removed, and we had to show them that the equipment that was removed was taken out by what we call UCC filings by banks and not the intent of the owners, and that it was a kind of a conglomerate of issues that kept this from reopening. And when we got that opinion, they moved forward. Now, at the time, I was aware or made aware of Mr. Shakers, Mr. Gary Shakers and his brother Jeffrey Shakers passed in Fall River. There was no intent to deceive anybody. This wasn't put forward to you as a liquor license by somebody else with some management agreement. We did not keep the fact that Mr. Shaker was the one that was funding the operation for his daughter, so was providing the purchase money to buy the property, and when we applied or when she applied for a liquor license, it certainly was not put in some straw's name or some way to keep it from anybody, nor was it disclosed from the very beginning when we talked to the zoning board, I'm sorry, to the building inspector's office. And they purchased, and they began to take permits, and they began to renovate so Bethany could fulfill her, what she wanted to do was to open this family restaurant, and we recognized that it would raise some concerns. One, is this merely a straw for Gary Shaker, and is this some nightclub that certainly had some sins in the past according to the documents that were presented, or is it in fact Bethany's? And I'm concerned with the fact that neighbors don't want anything there, and I think there's a distinction between whether or not we have a letter from the zoning department that we have a pre-existing grandfathered, non-conforming use of the restaurant, and in my opinion, accessory to that is the liquor license that it always had, and whether or not Bethany Shaker is a proper person to hold that license. When we went around to try to gather some information, and believe me, I have a great deal that can take up most of the night, including letters from city councilmen's in Fall River where she runs another establishment, and neighbors, there seems to be great confusion over what's going to operate there. Normally, if I was involved in the liquor license application, I would never be standing in front of the council without notifying neighbors, having an informational meeting, having everybody see what's exactly going on. What apparently pulled the trigger early, because there is no intention of being able to open anytime, even in the next three or four months, there's a number of work that needs to be done there. Prior to buying, they met with the fire officials, and they got a laundry list of things that had to be done, as the council's well aware, fire codes are never grandfathered, and under the new laws, it has to be brought up completely to modern. But eventually, what they settle on the fire code and what they settle on with Department of Health under septic criteria, there also is not grandfathered there, ultimately will be the number of seats and the size of this operation. And if we were standing in front of you after that and said, it's a 35-seat restaurant or a 40-person capacity, would not this council want to know that information in granting and passing on Bethany Shaker holding a liquor license, because they know what kind of establishment that it's going to be, and more importantly, they know what kind of establishment it's not going to be. It's not going to be a nightclub. So, the only reason apparently that she pulled the trigger on the liquor license, and I say that because I wasn't actually consulted on that, was that when she came to talk about it, she was told that there may be a limited number of BV licenses, and she should get on the agenda because of the numbers that were left, and that ended up putting, in my opinion, the cart before the horse, and her coming here without representation and finding out that there was a problem, but also having none of the answers that she doesn't have yet. She can't tell you how many seats, she can't tell you how many parking spaces, she can't tell me what kind of event it is. She's only here to tell you that she is looking for a restaurant, a family-type restaurant, similarly to a Family Ties or a Chili's, and not a nightclub-type atmosphere, obviously smaller than a Chili's, but I think Family Ties may be a good example. And that may not make some neighbors happy, but it may make a difference. I think they got 22 signatures in an hour today of people in the neighborhood that may in fact, or do in fact, support that type of situation, so we want to make sure that everybody's passing judgment on something that they know exactly what it is. Now, with that said, even if the council was to say, yes, the zoning opinion is valid, and yes, their liquor license is included, which is another issue, I think, between myself and Mr. Tights, would we do it under this type of operation? Well, this type of operation would have limited hours. Nightclubs, you know, restaurants stop seating at 9 o'clock, and people are done at 11:00, and lounges are open until 1:00 a.m., so there'd be restrictions, and those things that may change your mind. Now, with that said, I need to just, I'm still going to ask for a continuance, but to pass judgment a little bit on that package, it is a complicated package, which, again, there are great concerns, but I spent a lot of time today going through it, and especially what I looked at was the revocation from the city of Fall River on that board, and they said that that bar, which is in the Flint section of Fall River, and I'm afraid I'm not all that knowledgeable about Fall River, but the detective calls it a troublesome, high-crime, tough area. They operated that bar there for some 16 years, and they, the two brothers, who are her father and her uncle, had incidents that were cited, because it's repeated violations, as you know, that puts a liquor license in jeopardy, and they cited incidents.
Our Cub Scouts.
Yeah, Cub Scouts, my boy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I bored them right out of the room.
Hey.
But I'm sorry, those repeated incidents, and again, it's there for you, are in 1995, 1996, 1997, 2000, and then the fresh incident in 2011, which led to the shutting down of the bar. I assure you, from looking at her, you'll see that she was not as old as it's possible that she ran a bar or had a license in 1995. She was born in 1982, and she was seven, and she was eight in 96 and nine in 99, and not involved in that bar at all. What that package doesn't tell you is that upon getting out of school, she worked for the Sheriff's Department as a prison guard for the Departments of Correction, and she served there honorably until she got in a incident with an inmate that led to a disability, formerly not off the records there, I think, until 2012. What it also doesn't tell you is she currently holds a vituelation license and entertainment license in the city of Fall River in the very building that was shut down and still owned by her father. Ironically, now, it is Bethany's Youth Events Center and hosts Friday and Saturday night evenings for children between the age of 13 and 21, for an alternative place to play in a neighborhood that needs a place like that. We have letters at the appropriate time from the neighbors, we have letters from the city council. She is more than what was in front of you. I will tell you, I've read it again, there was a single incident in what was in front of you in shutting that bar down, that the narcotics group in Massachusetts said that there were drugs being sold in that bar, and for all reasons, we have no reason to believe that that's not true. They go out of their way to say that the owners may not have known that, but as an owner, you are responsible for what goes on inside. But each of the allegations say that a confidential informant went in, met with somebody, went into the men's room and had a transaction. If there is one place in a bar where you can say that the person that's working there or the daughter of the owner is not responsible for policing as a female, I'm hoping it's the men's room. Now, there is an allegation, clearly, and it's the most troubling allegation, and if you've read the package, you've got to get through it. It's an allegation that the confidential informant specifically stated that he went up to one gentleman and asked for drugs, and that that gentleman said, I don't have any, but when Bethany gets here, she'll give it to me, and he was clearly referring to Bethany Shaker. And as a result of that, she was charged in the city of Fall River with conspiracy to deliver drugs. That license board hearing was not against her... That license board hearing was not against her, it was against the license holder, and it was revoked in May of 2011. She proclaimed her innocence like people do who are innocent, and she went not through the justice system so that somebody dropped the case, she went to a full trial. And at that trial, she was found not guilty. And I have ordered the transcript of the decision, which I think is much more of that case, which I think is much more important than the transcripts that you have for the license board hearing. And I am told, and I have a letter from Patrick, Mr. Sahadi, or Michael Sahadi, who was her lawyer, that the reason that the case was dismissed is because the confidential informant was found not to be reliable as to her. It was an inmate that she disciplined while she was working at the corrections facility. And they said there was no other evidence from the other plethora of people that were there, all the other detectives and everything, that on the night in question, she was even in the building. And I understand the sins of a father can affect us all. I don't want to badmouth my father, but I'm in his business. I realize that there are things, I take credit for all the great he did, and I get criticized for all he did bad. But at best, she was at that, or, you know, had knowledge of that bar. There's no peril of her being on a payroll, she's never a manager, she never drew a check, and she was charged. And for that, she spent her life savings and two years of her life fighting and was found not guilty of the charge. Now, if with all of that, you're going to say, "I don't care," then I guess we're wasting my time, but I would like to get all of those proper transcripts before you. I'd like to have the neighbors understand, this is not a way to get dad or uncle's alleged biker bar here in Tiverton neighborhoods. It is to put back into the community a family, small restaurant. And I think, within a couple of months, I could find out whether or not Department of Health specifically and DEM is going to say, despite your grandfather, and the fire code, by the way, because how much you, how much equipment you put in, I believe, has a direct relation to your capacity. But if the capacity is X, and as limited by all of these things, and the hours are this, and, you know, even on probationary status, would this board consider if anything I say is true? And if so, I just want the time to do that, so our decision is informed.
Okay. Well, again, this hearing has been continued from September 8th, so, and I know there are residents here who wish to speak, so I'm going to continue the hearing. Whether or not we make a decision this evening, when we get there, we'll see. But in deference to the people who weren't able to speak the last time because of the continuance, I will allow the public to speak today, and then we will go from there.
And then I'll start mine.
All right. So, anyone from the public? Please come forward to the mic. State your name.
My name is Paul Tussero. I live on Bay Street. I've lived there for 65 years. I was there when the original bar, which was called Simpson's Cafe, was there. I used to go there as a child. It was my bus stop. The people who ran the place, I remember her name was Mary, was seven years old, so that's about all I can give you, would actually have some food for us in the morning, and it was a real family event. And then I got older, and the neighborhood got older. At some point, the Simpson's Cafe was sold. When that happened, the parking area, which was across the street, was not sold with the property. I believe the next restaurant, and I don't know which is which, but I believe Seabreeze is the one that comes to mind, was there. And at that time, I ended up buying my residence where I was born, again, just down the street. And it started out okay. It was also supposed to be a family restaurant, but we started having entertainment during the summer. By the way, this is not Tiverton soil contamination land. We've undergone a battery for the last 15 years of lawyers, lawsuits. We're tired. We were just getting our community back when we heard this notice. And we're still dealing, and we'll see you later, about sewerage issues. So, we seem to be embattled all the time. So, if I sound a little duress, please forgive me. Getting back to the point, when it was Simpsons, it was a quiet bar. When it was Seabreeze, it got noisier and noisier. It was supposed to be a family restaurant. Problem was, there was music going on because there was dancing, the windows were open, and in the summer, it, excuse me, it carries. We live at the bottom of the hill. To our west is an oil tank farm. They have a tendency to echo every sound in the neighborhood, and then the hill bounces it back. I can hear somebody talking three blocks down, so it's a little sensitive, and I'll give it that. But many a night, I tried to sleep, and all I could hear was music and singing. Then, I heard more noise. I went out into my yard. I found people who parked up against the fence because there was no parking available anymore, and they were throwing things in the yard, and once, they even got into a fight, because they don't care, it's not their neighborhood. Now, we've gone through all this, and on the side that this facility is, there's no sidewalk. It's just the grass that they just put back in. So, cars tend to just park right there, park in front of my gate, edge the nose in front of the driveway, park in front of my neighbor's place, and when the bar closes, they're still outside, because they're having a good time. I've tried to complain back then and never did any good. They had the right to do that, because you gave them the right, you gave them the license. Eventually, the place folded, and we've had quiet on that neighborhood for a while. So, what I want you to think about, given the noise that is generated by this kind of establishment, and given the parking problem, where I don't see that there's sufficient parking, would you want this next to your house? And we've gone through hell. I'd like you to give some consideration to the people that are just tired, very tired, of having to fight, just the rest in peace in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Francis Korea, A Bay Street. I live right straight across from the bar. I was the bar manager when it become the Seabreeze Restaurant. I worked in the bar as a bartender, and it was a very quiet bar. It was a family bar and restaurant. Before that, it was a homicide restaurant, just so Paul would know. And my father-in-law and my-in-law owned the house across the street that I bought, and they lived there 30 years, since 1970 they were there. And the biggest problem I have of that becoming a bar is every Saturday or Sunday, I would have to go down there and pick up beer bottles out of my lawn before I could cut the grass. And my driveway was blocked 90% of the time, because someone would try to sneak their car between the fire hydrant and my driveway. Okay? The next-door neighbor to the parking lot has 12 kids. Okay? And the town forced the Seabreeze, Manny and Fernando, to put the dumpster in the parking lot. All you could smell was rotten fish and seafood out of the dumpster. Okay? Because they had it, when Manny and Maria owned it, it was on the backside of the restaurant. That was a fine place to have it. I don't know why it was moved, but my main concern is the parking. My main concern is, since they stopped the non-smoking in bars and restaurants, where do they stand? Right out in front of the establishment? And what are they doing? They're using foul language. I have five grandchildren, four grandsons and a granddaughter. I have a 35-foot deck in the side of my driveway. I'm not going to be on the deck with my grandkids listening to that language. And that is my main concern, and I hope you people realize of what you're doing, because we've been through, like Paul said, hell, because of the contamination and nobody else, and we're just getting started to get our lives back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Please come forward.
My name is Mary Lou Emerald. I live on Putt Street, behind that restaurant. My grandchildren play on that street. I'm the only house. I don't need cars running up and down that street, which is a one-way. They'll come from both sides, they'll be parking, there will be no freedom for these children. The little girls next door, they play, they can play till eight o'clock at night if they're dark. You think if we've got a bar or whatever that's going to be, and I believe that's what it'll be, I don't want, I'm not very happy about this. I'm a little street, and if I've got cars on it, and I can't get by to get in my driveway, I don't think that's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yes, my name is John Camper. I live on 91 State Avenue. All the years that those bars were there, very hard to sleep at night, throwing beer bottles into my yard, broken glasses on the sidewalk when the children get up in the morning, to walk to school, they step up, broke the glasses. I don't recommend that restaurant being ever at all. All it was was just a problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. President, members of the council, Chief Lakey. I do have a concern about the business coming into town, parking, state line is a problem within itself. We have one bar currently in town at the state line. We have people who just will visit the bar and go right over the state line. We can't pursue them, we have to work in conjunction with the city of Fall River. It's a quiet bar as well, but we've had shots fired into the bar, I'm not saying this particular bar. The call volume at the bar in Fall River, over a eight-month period, is 108 calls, and I do not have the manpower to entertain any type of call volume like that. Not just 108 calls, but sometimes 10 units, which I do not have. So, I do have a substantial concern of a bar coming into town, or it's a restaurant or whatever it's going to be, but the best indicator for future performance is past performance to me, and that's what I'm trying to watch out for.
Yes, Chief, have you asked the officer who was involved in the Fall River property to be present here tonight?
I have.
Okay. And so, he's available to talk to the council as well?
Correct.
Okay. Let me call him forward, please. Sergeant.
Is this the public for a continuance, or is this your case?
This is the case, and then we'll decide.
It's a public hearing, it's not a case.
Right, it's the hearing.
Yeah, I think it's a public hearing, we have people here, we have members of the public who are here to talk, we have the officer who's here at the expense of the town of Tiverton, so might as well all here. And that'll be up to the council to decide on the continuance afterwards.
Okay, please state your name, please.
Good evening. My name's Sergeant William Philandys, sergeant for the Farover Police Department. I could just give you a little bit of background on me, so you have an idea. During the time of 2011, I was assigned as a task force officer from the city of Farover to the Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms Task Force. My primary function there was to investigate narcotic and firearm laws for both ATF and the city of Farover. During that time, I conducted an investigation along with ATF. It was a federal investigation regarding the establishment that Bethany was a manager of during that time. As a result of that investigation, several arrests were made. Those arrests consisted of violent crimes. During my investigation, it was brought to my knowledge, also knowledge of the ATF, that serious infractions were being, laws were being broken based upon a cooperating witness that we had was supplying us disinformation. Let me just give you, I know the counselor said that he wasn't rendered credible in the court's eyes during that case, but let me just give you a little bit of background on the cooperating witness. I've worked with that cooperating witness for approximately four years, and during that time, I've made several, multiple, probably over 15 arrests. We also bought several firearms in an area of maybe 15. We bought explosives, we bought large quantities of narcotics. And during my tenure with the ATF, several of those cases that this cooperating witness worked on rendered guilty's in both federal and state courts. Was he rendered by that court as not being credible for that case? Well, that's a matter of opinion by the judge, it's a matter of opinion by the jury. However, based upon me working with that cooperating witness, he was very reliable for both us and the federal government. To give you a background about that establishment of Farover and how it was being run, during my investigation, I learned that multiple areas of that establishment were being used to either facilitate drug dealing or the operation of drugs. They had a room in that establishment that was considered a smoking room, which was in violation of the city ordinance and the state ordinance of not smoking any products in that room. It became my knowledge through the cooperating witness and other witnesses that we had that illegal narcotics was being smoked in that section. As a result of this, we made several buys of narcotics in that establishment, which were both video and audio recorded. Again, it was a federal investigation. Based on that investigation, there's certain laws in federal government that we're allowed to do as far as audio and video, and there's laws, rules of law in state that we cannot do as far as audio and video. To my knowledge, I believe that in Bethany's case, that audio and video wasn't supplied, weren't allowed to be introduced in the case, which would have been very vital to that case because of the law, point of laws for the state.
Really? I mean, I understand you can say, but you can't say anything you want.
It's a hearing, you'll have a chance to speak. Go ahead, Sergeant.
Dating back, so as a result of my investigation, we've made several arrests from that establishment on a certain night. During that night, it was brought to my attention, and in particular, the case that they're referring to, that she was found not guilty, a controlled buy was set up with not only Bethany, but Bethany's boyfriend. And as a result of that, we ended up buying narcotics. Now, again, counselor is correct that this case did go forward to state court, she was found not guilty. But again, that's a matter of opinion by a judge or jury. I believe that if we had to, we were able to introduce all the evidence that we're able to do, there might have been a different outcome. Now, to go back to the night that we executed several search warrants at that location, we introduced the cooperating witness to buy a firearm out of that establishment on that given night. That individual did go in there, and as a result of buying that firearm, he was held up with that firearm, and there was money taken from him that was actually recorded, federal money, excuse me, that we had recorded, and we found on the three people that we end up catching in the bar that night. Now, there are statements here that were made that, going back to '95 or sins of the father, I get that, I understand that, but if we go back to 2011, that's all I want to focus on, is that Bethany was listed as the manager there. We have her on video and audio stating that she is the manager there. When I was there that night, I talked to her and her father, which neither of whom were cooperative with the outcome that evening. Which, I get it, if you're not involved in it, I understand that, but if you're the owner and manager of the bar, from that point on, at least be cooperative with the investigation. We found them not to be cooperative at all. So, we'll focus on that 2011, where she's listed as the manager. Multiple, multiple buys and multiple gang-related crimes were being conducted in that bar freely and within a wide-open space. Again, the counselor had stipulated tonight that this place is now being utilized as a place for 13-year-olds. I'm a patrol, so I just recently got promoted, and I patro- I'm a patrol, so I just recently got promoted, and I patrol that area consistently on four nights a week. And to my knowledge, I've never seen a 13-year-old come out of that establishment, nor any people come out of that establishment. It's been closed since the revocation's been set forth. I see no traffic, no business going in and out of that. There is a sign saying it's Bethany's establishment, but I see no business being conducted out of that. So, to my knowledge, that's not being done. And I know, from speaking with people within the city of Fall River, they have gone forward to reapply for some licenses, and they've been denied. So, based on that, that's what I, that I have.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask Sergeant a couple of particular questions before the council members?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant. I will bring you back in a second.
Okay.
Is there anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Denise Theryan Lambert. I am a friend of Bethany's. I've known Bethany for three years. I didn't know what Shaker's was. I've lived an isolated life, three children, married. Anyway, Bethany is a wonderful girl. I've met her, she is as clean as the clean, you don't even know, okay? Put it this way, Bethany's, there is people coming in and out of that establishment, has been all summer, but the ages of 13 to 18. I am a chaperone there. It's a no-tolerance policy. On Friday nights now, it's from 7:00 to 11:00. Parents drop their pack, their children off, they're in the building, they dance, they have fun, they get to congregate with their friends in a safe, quiet environment. We have a constable that sits outside of that, that building. He walks them to their cars, they do not leave, they do not leave unless a parent is there for them. And we do not let them out of the building. So there is people coming in and out of that establishment. Thursday nights, all summer long, and Friday nights for the winter. We will be having Halloween dances, fun, you know, we, we just booked a couple of birthday parties. We do a wonderful thing for the children. Bethany is not who these people are trying to make her out to be. Sins of a father. Bethany was not the manager there. If you read any of this stuff, any of it, you know that she spent her whole entire life-saving as proving herself innocent. She was not there that night, from what I can read. And I didn't know her back then, I read it, okay? I read what you people read. I'm forming my opinion, because I also have three children, who are now in their twenties. And they're very well behaved and managed. And I would not do anything to jeopardize my life, or my children's life, or their careers for anyone. But you know what? I'd stand behind her. If it came to my life, I'd stand behind her because she would protect me, okay? My mother has a memorial across from this, this restaurant that Bethany is trying to open. My mother was part of the CSO and the SOS Committee. She was the president of the SOS Committee. They have a memorial across the street from her. And I would not support anything in any way, shape, or form that would hurt that area, because my mother was a very protective and well-known person. You spoke her name, everybody knew her, okay? She did very well for that community, and I wouldn't do anything or go by, or hurt her in any way, shape, or form in her memorial and allow something that is gonna cause great harm to this community. I also grew up in this community, and I love it very much. And when Beth and I spoke about this restaurant, we agreed that this would be run as a family restaurant for you, 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 your grandchildren, any of yous people to go to. The hours would be, would be closed at 11:00, because we don't want to cause harm to these people. And we're willing to work with the community as far as what is needed for them to be quiet and safe. We're willing to do that. But it's just sitting there rotting. And I grew up, I used to go there as the, with the, as the homicide, with my family, my mother and father, my sisters. I did the same thing as all of these people did. We're not out to hurt anybody, we're out to make something that was, that's, that stands there, has been there for years, something a little bit nicer than what it looks like now, and is now. We're trying to make the, the community a little brighter, that is all. We're not trying to hurt anybody, and we're willing to work with these people. Now, I know Bethany for only three years, and from what I know of her, and I've read all of the things that you have read and more. And I know that Bethany is a good woman and a good person, and she would give her right arm for any child. So, you can make your decision, you can listen to these people, you have to, I understand that, they're the court of law, I understand that. They have their opinions, I've read the same thing you've read, and I know that there was some questions there. So, that's all I have to say. There is people coming in and out of Bethany's. We run a very quiet and nice establishment for the kids, because that's what we're about. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. President, Chief Lloyd Tiverton, Fire Department. I, I support the police chief and his stand on this. I don't know Ms. Shaker, I have no ties to that whatsoever, but I do have ties to this establishment in that this has been an ongoing problem since 2003 with this building being in non-compliance. We have also brought this building forward before previous town councils to have show cause hearings, to have the attorney say that he has sat with the members of the Fire Prevention Bureau. They may have gotten the previous reports, but the laws have changed. We have problems. Right now, my understanding is that there is an occupant on the second floor of this building without a certificate of occupancy. There is no separation between the restaurant and that living quarters upstairs. We have laundry list, a huge list of fire code violations, but that's under an old code. We need to go underneath the new code. They have not come forward to our bureau in any way, shape, or form and offered up any plans or suggestions. There was a building permit that was taken out to change a door and some windows. Next thing we know, there's been a lot more work done there. Where paneling has been removed, things have been done. My history here, when things like that occur, this is just a telltale sign of what's gonna happen down the road. I think we need to hold these licenses. We can't, we should not give out this license until all these items are corrected and brought into code compliance, so that we're assured that we have a safe building there for the occupants, for the tenants, and for the neighbors of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I will call back Sergeant from Fall River. Okay, Mr. Teich, you may ask your questions now.
Thank you. President, I just wanted to ask you, just to be specific for the council, not, not talking about the court and your opinions of that or not, specifically your observations, because you were, you were involved with investigating this establishment for several months, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, based on what, you know, your own personal observations, can you tell us about this idea of how it was laid out and where there was an area that the smoking and the drugs was, that was permitted, as opposed to just going on in the bathrooms? Can you tell, can you tell us specifically about that?
Yes. When you entered the establishment, you, you could access the back by, it was an easement that brought you to the rear of the establishment. And the rear of the establishment was another area. It was a couple of steps down, and you were in the lower level of the establishment. In that lower level, there was a cage set up. It looked like a chicken wire fence with two-by-fours made into a cage. That's what it basically was. And in that cage, you had ashtrays and, I believe there was a video machine that was in there, but you could go in there, and that was designated as the smoking area. When you went into that area, the night of the search warrant, you could smell marijuana in the air there. My observations during the night of the search warrant is when we entered that establishment, we went in with a large contingency of law enforcement officers. We were, we isolated every individual that was in that establishment at the time. And as a result of that, just on that night, the patrons, one patron had a firearm on that was legal, but he still had a firearm on him, which is, he was legally holding the firearm, but illegally because of, under the guidelines of having a firearm, can't be in a liquor drinking in an establishment. As a result of canvassing the area of the establishment, the night of the search warrant, several bags of marijuana, several bags of cocaine were located on the floor, based upon our media entrance going in there. Pictures, if I could get a folder again, if need be, that we have pictures of that evening. But again, it's, to go into an establishment like that on a, on a night like that, and you find that on the patrons in there, to me, that is a telltale sign.
So, based on what you observed, would it be possible for the management of this establishment not to know what was going on?
Oh, without a doubt. There's no doubt in my mind that if you were a manager, a bartender, a waitress, it was common knowledge. Again, we have several recordings of with not just a bartender, but we have conversations being spoke to the bartender through the cooperating witness that we have. There's no doubt in my mind that if you were an employee at that establishment, you had knowledge that there was illegal acts being committed. To the dog guy who was wanting people, that were selectively wanting, the regulars were let right back, right into the establishment. I have an extensive background in gang and drug knowledge in the city of Fall River, and these are high-profile gang members that we have listed documented that were being allowed in there without being warned. And when you talk to these, we talked to these individuals when this investigation was going on, and they were instructed by the staff, by the managers of that establishment to allow them in.
You said the individual, you mean the bouncer? The bouncer who would wave the metal detecting wand around people?
Correct. They would just look at the bartender, he's a regular, and allow him to go come in. They were fully aware, that without a doubt, all staff and the management of that establishment, fully aware of what was going on. And if they tell you they weren't, then that's a problem in itself, because it was so blatant that these are the people you don't want running an establishment like this.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'm, I'm not going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions, and then we'll give you an opportunity to speak again, and then we'll determine whether or not we will close the hearing. Counsel?
I do have one question. It's really directed both to counsel and to Mr. Teich, because it's somewhat legal. There was a couple of references to the fact that, apparently you're claiming that there are grandfathered rights in the business. I assume you're referring to the legal license. What I'd like to do is get a clear understanding of what the facts are and what the legal arguments are for any type of grandfathering, particularly with respect to the legal license. It was my, I assumed, and I thought that the, this license had expired some years ago. I don't know what grandfathered rights there would be at this point.
It, it was not expired, it was revoked by a previous council after the failure to comply with the fire code regulations, the access for the apartment over the separation. So the council, the previous town council revoked the license. When was that, Andy? Some years ago. I don't...
Yeah, it wasn't since I've been around.
It was several years ago, somewhere between 2005 and now.
It was before 2008, I can tell you that.
Well, I would then direct my question then to counsel and ask him to explain what the arguments, what his arguments are.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Counsel.
Okay. So I just want to say, I mean, it happens to have been specifically revoked. Even if it hadn't been, even if it had just been allowed to expire, there is no grandfathering on a liquor license. This is a new license that you have before you, and you do have a great deal of discretion on whether you are deciding to give it. The statute provides wide discretion in determining whether or not to issue a liquor license, according to our Supreme Court. And while criminal conviction requires proof beyond a reasonable doubt, which is what would have been required to convict in court for a felony, there's obviously no such standard. It's not even a preponderance of the evidence standard that you're required to come from as far as you're looking forward. Once you've granted a license, it becomes a property interest, and you have to have a show cause hearing, and there's a higher standard defined to revoke it. But before you grant it, you have a great deal of discretion. And as I said, I, I do, let me just note, I do think there is some legal non-conforming use under zoning for some size restaurant at the property. But the size is yet to be determined, and certainly the liquor license, there's no vested rights whatsoever in my mind.
Would you agree with that, counsel?
No.
Okay. What is your, I want to make sure, I want to make sure when I make an assessment here, that I'm proceeding on a standard that I have wide discretion. I don't want to be surprised by an argument that there are in fact grandfathered rights here.
No liquor license, as far as I'm concerned, is grandfathered. A liquor license is unique to the applicant for one year, subject to revocation at any time to the statute, and all of that is true. The zoning ordinance identifies uses on a property. It has nothing to do with who owns it, it has nothing to do with who's operating it. Just, just hear me out, please. When you have a grandfathered right, it is because you operated a business that was allowed, that is not allowed under current zoning, that it was allowed because of its pre-existence. The only business that operated there, when we sought a zoning enforcement opinion, which we're likely to rely on, is, was the restaurant with, because, with a liquor license, grandfathered or not? Remember, your ordinance is unique. Your ordinance actually says restaurant, and has a number of categories where it is either allowed, not allowed, or allowed by special use for it, and restaurant with liquor license and entertainment where it is allowed. So if the prior restaurant did not have a liquor license, I don't believe we could be here. We can't be grandfathered in for that. But the only, there's no testimony whatsoever that the occupation of the Seabreeze or the Harborside, mostly the Seabreeze, although apparently not run well, and apparently run more as a bar than a restaurant, was approved and in zoning, if you will. It was not grandfathered as a restaurant. It was grandfathered as your category, restaurant with liquor license. Now, that does not mean that Bethany Shaker can have a liquor license. The question is, and I get that, but that is what I'm trying to, I, I can talk for a long time on this officer's statements, but for right now, that doesn't mean she can do it. The question is, can Gary Shaker sell that tomorrow to two nuns and a priest who come in here and say, "I am grandfathered"? Your liquor license on whether you give it or not is based on the applicant and whether it is allowed. Now, what 3510 of Rhode Island general law says is, it can't be within this many feet of this and this many feet of that, there's none of that. And it can't, and then you look at the applicant and you ask whether they have a criminal record. You understand that this officer can say, in his opinion, he thought something, and in his opinion, he thought somebody credible. But a jury and a judge said specifically from the bench, not as to every other time this 18-time convicted felon testified, he might have been the most reliable guy in the world. I, I, believe me, I just made up 18, I have his record, I think it's more like 14, but I don't mean to exaggerate. He said, "As to this particular allegation, it's not done." And that's the transclusive thing. And, and she was found not guilty. So, the question is, if someone else came with a liquor license here. Now, again, remember, we didn't go buy a place and then go check on it. We sought a zoning certificate and specifically said the past use. One of, ironically, one of the pictures that I had to produce to show that there was no abandonment, because some of the hood systems for the restaurant were taken out by the bank, is that the, in fact, keg and tap system was still in place. And I showed pictures of all of that, showing that as part of the non-abandonment to the, both building officials. So I believe, because your ordinance separates restaurant and restaurant and liquor license, that it's grandfathered that a restaurant and liquor license. Now, it can't be anymore, and by the way, we want less, because it appears the Seabreeze turned into a bar, and that's not what we're trying to do, but it's still a BV license.
Now, you've answered my question, I understand what you're saying, the distinction...
That's because your ordinance, in my opinion, draws a distinction.
Okay. Mr. Pelletier?
Oh, Jay, are you done?
Yeah. Thank you.
The, I'm less concerned...
I'm less concerned about, I'm sorry. Am I, yeah, I'm less concerned about whether we retry this case. You know, it's not really pertinent to what we're doing. My concern is that I don't think either one of us, you folks or us, are in a position to have enough information to either grant a liquor license or a victualling license or an entertainment license or deny one. I don't know how, what the capacity of this restaurant is going to be. I don't know how many parking spaces there are in the back. I don't know where you're going to locate your dumpster, what you're going to do for noise mitigation, what you're going to do for parking, what you're going to do for hours of operation. And I don't think you do either. To say that it's premature for us to make a decision tonight, I think, is obvious. But I think we can probably come back and do that, those things, because I'm not comfortable one way or the other voting on this tonight, because I've got half a page of notes that none of us have the answers to. And there are questions I absolutely would need answered before I even considered talking about this. That's just my two cents. And, you know, we've got information we need from planning and zoning and the fire marshal and all of these things. There are just way too many unknowns for me to feel comfortable doing anything at this moment.
Before we continue, are we through with Sergeant?
I have no questions for this argument.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down.
I could cross-examine him for quite some time if I'm not going to have another opportunity, obviously. I have some great issues with a number of the things that he said. I don't know if that's proper tonight. If it's a, we've got to pay him to be here, I'll pay him to be here. What is a detail pay is, that's not the issue. The issue is, when the time, proper time comes, that was some very strong testimony. And I have some very strong opinions as to the accuracy of that testimony. And if it's a town issue, then I have no problem with, you know, I'm sure detail pay can be on my dime. That's not the problem. But in fairness, I'm not trying to cost the town any money, but it seems to me that he should be present.
Then let's ask him to stay a few minutes longer until the council decides whether you're going to continue it or not. So, if not...
I did work this out with Chief Racine, too, though he could be here. Rangers could be made if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
My concern is for Stephanie to do all this renovation, Bethany, Stephanie, I'm sorry, Bethany to do all this renovation, and at the end, we don't grant that liquor license. So, that's my only...
That's the risk any entrepreneur takes when doing that in a town of Tiverton, because liquor licenses aren't guaranteed. And I also might say that there's no hard and fast requirement that we have a limit on liquor licenses. We've increased the number of full BV liquor licenses in the past by a simple petition to add another liquor license. It's not, I know some parts of the world liquor licenses are...
Commodities.
Oh, yeah, they're worth...
Based on a formula on the population and...
Yeah, or they're really a hot commodity that you can't just walk up and say, "Can I have one?" That's not the case here in Tiverton, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be discouraged if there were 16 and 16 slots were filled. There's room for consideration.
And I think we have two or three openings, too.
Two.
I just think there's a hierarchy of concerns here that before we kind of put the cart before the horse, I mean, liquor license or not, I mean, there seems to be some safety, bona fide safety concerns here that, you know, if not addressed, it doesn't matter. You're not going to have your restaurant or whatever. You know what I mean? So, I do believe that, you know. And I'm curious, Andy, from a hierarchy of kind of licensing, does the victualling license need to be approved and granted before the liquor license is one contingent on the other?
Yeah. Well, yes, because it's a BV, you have to have both.
Okay.
You can have the victual's license alone. You can't have the BV without the victual's.
There you go. And that's kind of what I'm getting at here. So, from my perspective, and I would echo Brett's sentiments, that, I mean, we are void of a lot of important information here to make any sort of, even before we get to the BV license, just the victualling license.
The entertainment license.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we've got to fix some things first here.
Anyone else from the council? Okay. I'll give you an opportunity to question Sergeant in a few moments. I'm just going to say, I have concerns. My biggest concern is that we have no true information regarding the restaurant. And for anyone to outlay whatever it's going to cost you to rehab this place, to come before this council without that information, it's a tough sell, you know, because we are sitting here not knowing what type of business. You can tell us it's a family restaurant, but is it a 100-seat family restaurant? Is it a 30-seat family restaurant? And again, what constitutes a family restaurant? Is a liquor license a necessity for a family restaurant? You know, these are the questions, you know, that I would ask. The entertainment license, what constitutes entertainment? What type of entertainment will you, you know, would you be planning to have there? Again, which would have impact on the neighbors. So, there are a lot of unanswered questions as far as I am concerned, and I'm sure the council has the same things, that we don't know what type of business this is going to be. And for anyone to sit there and try to ask for a liquor license or a victualling license or an entertainment license, it's very difficult for us to even consider it because we have no idea what the establishment is going to be. And I do have concerns, and I will ask you pointedly, were you manager of the establishment in Forever?
Definitely not.
Okay. So, again, I'm only going by hearsay that tells me that you were listed as a manager, you know. Again, I will take you at your word that you're saying you're not, but again, these are concerns, you know, that we hear about. And as far as the neighborhood is concerned, they have their issues, too. I mean, I know exactly where it is. It's not a wide street, and there's little or no parking there, so that's a consideration, you know, even if it's a 20-seat restaurant. You know, if 10 cars come, where are they going to park? You know, where are the dumpsters going to be? All those types of issues that have not been answered, you know. So, again, I personally don't think that we can act on this, this evening, without further information. But again, I will allow you to speak to the officer if you'd like, but again, I'm going to recommend that we...
Mr. President, can I ask one question?
Yep.
Just to follow up to what you're saying. We've been referring to this as a license. In fact, you have three separate requests. There's a request for an entertainment license, a victualling license, and a liquor license. Would you plan to open this as a family restaurant if all you received was a victualling license? Or a victualling and an entertainment license with no liquor license? Would you open that place?
That's my question. Yes.
I can say we've talked about that, and we've talked about that, we didn't want to start with it even as a condition, to say, "Let's open it and operate it," and then come back in six months and say, "How about a beer and wine license?" And then after six months or a year or whatever the council feels is to prove ourselves that we're not a nightclub and we're not a problem, then to say something different. Entertainment can be done on a case-by-case basis. I mean, first of all, there was no indication that entertainment was going to be rock bands, by the way. You know, this was a place that you could hopefully rent out to have a shower or something like that, which could have, you know, some type of one person strumming on a guitar or something. But entertainment can be looked at separately and can be looked at individually. We could, we could make, you know, there's details that are mandatory in some places. There's a number of licenses that are graduated. There's a number of time slots, but we still have to get by, I think, and I think I'm by, but that you have a right to have a restaurant there. The size, I think, is what everybody says is going to be dictated by things that aren't grandfathered. Fire chief is exactly right, and we weren't in here asking for a license, saying, "Give us a license. We're opening tomorrow." We put it right up that we don't, we can't open until the fire department says we can open. We can't open until the Department of Health says we can open, and we can't open until the licenses are properly granted. All of those would be contingent. She put the cart before the horse for the sole reason that she was told that it is a limited number of licenses, and there's one left, and you have to grab it. I didn't even believe that, and I asked her to call again today, and she got that information again today. I agree with you, at least, and my apologies for not knowing Tiverton as well as Portsmouth, but our BV licenses are the same, and all they say is, "All in favor of raising it to 16, say aye." That does concern me a little bit because that might be a different standard to add a license than it is fitness is a different standard. Fitness is a very specific standard, and I have to get by as well. I don't believe that it's in the best interest of everybody to cross-examine him today. I would ask again that I give plenty of notice to Chief Blakely. If we need him on our dime, I'll ask him. I can also point out, remember, I have, even with me, that the same handouts like Andy Tights gave you, I have his under oath testimony at the trial in the cross-examining of whether he confirmed she was manager and whether he saw that she was in the building that night and all of the things. And again, I'm waiting for the judge's transcript. It saddens me a little bit that I have to prove her innocent again after somebody else did, but I understand OJ Simpson was found not guilty. I get that, and I understand there's different standards, but this is a completely...
I don't see her wearing a leather glove, so I'm not...
It's a completely different atmosphere and environment that she's trying to do.
Echo what I said earlier. I don't have any interest or intent on retrying that case or whether she was or wasn't guilty of any crime or misdemeanor or any of that. What is important to me as part of the licensing board for this town is, is this facility appropriately situated? Is it appropriately, you know, there, noise mitigation and parking and all the operational things, a restaurant or a bar or a cafe would be required in a particularly sensitive neighborhood because it is so densely situated. It's not a great geography for a restaurant when there are people still driving around in cars. Maybe when people walk down the street, it's a little more appropriate. But I don't think there are, you know, immeasurable hurdles. I think we can probably get there as long as we have an understanding of what the heck is going on.
Thank you. What I would like to do then is to have the time to not only clear with the fire department and the Department of Environmental Management and Department of Health for capacity. Then I assure you, I will invite, whether they show up or not, I will go onsite personally and meeting and invite everybody within however many feet that we think is practical, certainly more than 200 under your ordinance, and ask them for input. And we always do that in, even though this isn't zoning, we always do, where would be the best place for a dumpster? Where would be, you know, what hours of operation might you find more acceptable? If music is a problem, sometimes it's even where you don't set up as opposed to where you do set up. And one thing I do say, it is important to me that what I say, I try to be very accurate with, and I made representations that she owns and operates Bethany's, and then I heard, unfortunately, from the officer that when he's there, it doesn't happen. I know you heard from the other person, but I have letters from Leo Pelletier, the city councilman, Fall River, saying what a nice job she's doing there. I have letters from the Fall River Laundry Company, the neighbor, saying, "Bethany checks with us to ensure events are going smoothly from our perspective. She and her staff maintain curb appeal of business, monitoring dispersed loiterers, and doing overall excellent job of maintaining a positive presence in our neighborhood." So, I mean, I didn't take this for granted that she did this. We have a bunch of testimonials from people, and I understand that the officer just may be there different days, so I'm not accusing him of anything, but it makes me sound bad as well. I understand I've got to defend Stephanie, but we're sitting here like we're telling you fiction, and it's just not fiction.
That's why I called her Stephanie.
Oh.
I just, maybe just a sort of way of going about resolving what we do next is, it seems to me that there are two avenues. We can continue this hearing to a date certain, or what seems to make more sense is that we start it over again? A withdrawal of application and just go forward again, or is that too much?
You'd have to re-advertise.
I think that's a wise move.
When she's ready.
When you're ready.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're going to continue this and continue it and continue it and continue it if we get to that point. Otherwise, we're, do you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, I also think we're coming up to the end of this council's term.
Yeah.
And we know that certain members aren't seeking reelection, so we know there'll be different council members here. So, it really has to be resolved in October or it's going to go over again. I guess what I would ask is, if the applicant would be willing to allow the record from tonight to be incorporated by reference, and we've got a copy, actually, it's even videotaped, at a future, your future application, then I would suggest, yes, allowing them to withdraw the application without prejudice would make the most sense, then they can come back when they have their ducks in order.
You wouldn't even really need to charge them another application, maybe you do.
Well, the state has to get their...
You do.
Their chunk of money as well and the advertising.
Yeah, because, I mean, just logistically, this thing gets continued any more than two or three months, we're going to be hearing it all over again because more than likely half of us aren't going to be here.
If I can make a suggestion, I will ask counsel and Bethany, if by a date certain in October, if you would have preliminaries of what quote-unquote you intended to be...
In fairness, we won't have the Department of Health and Department of Environmental Management and full fire department statistics on that. I don't have any problem withdrawing and redoing it. My only issue on withdrawing is, again, it's easy to say there is, that we'll just make another one if we need it, but my concern without researching it is that that's a different standard on, if you deny it, it's pretty much a de novo appeal, as you know, to the license board. But there may be a different standard on whether the amount of discretion you can exercise in having 16 instead of 15 than there is on whether or not you can apply a non-criminal record against a person based on testimony that she was a criminal. And I don't want to get, you know, mixed up at the next hearing on whether or not we win the battle and lose the war, and I have some appeals board say, "Well, you know, the standard for operating discretion on a new 16 license as opposed to 15 is broad discretion, and the discretion on doing it on whether or not she was a fit person is something different." Because I know Mr. Tights says that, the state law says you have discretion, but there's a number of cases that say that discretion is not unfettered discretion. You have to make a reasonable judgment applying all the evidence and having a factual basis to do it. So, I think, you know, I can certainly stipulate that you can use everything from tonight. I just don't want a different standard applied to me that will be applying the same standard when, is that acceptable to you?
Okay. What I would suggest, if the council agrees, is that then this hearing will be closed and that Ms. Shaker would have to notify the butters and all the normal, you know, unfortunately, fees and whatnot that go along with that, if that's the wish of the council. If so, I will entertain a motion on that.
Sure. I will make a motion that we close this advertised public hearing with regards to Bethany Shaker for Riptide Sports Grill at One Bay Street and begin the process whenever the applicant is...
I think, well, may I suggest that you grant the applicant's motion to withdraw without prejudice, provided that the record from tonight should be incorporated by reference when they do return.
Exactly what Andy just said.
And that we return in the same slot, if you will. We reapply, we redo everything, but we still have an available, on an available license standard.
All right. Well, we can't keep an available license forever, though. So, how about six months? Is that...
That is more than fair. If we haven't applied in six months, that rules out. That's more than fair. I don't expect it should take that long.
And if we get three people that apply, we'll just, we'll consider increasing the...
Call them back in at that point, yeah.
And whoever's here after no number can make that decision.
Yes. But we've done that in the past with Wally's Tap House. That's how we came and got it to, I believe it's 18. Andy and I differ on that. I think there's two available licenses, and I would suggest that... Bethany Shaker deal with the clerk as opposed to the licensing clerk. Right now, we do have a new licensing clerk. I would not agree that what apparently you're saying was told is what is accurate in there, okay? But I do have a brand-new licensing clerk, so it'd be best if you just contact me on this.
Yeah, and I certainly don't want to step on anybody's toes for last in the wrong person.
I say that because I've had two other businesses contact me concerning licenses, and I have relayed the exact-
Whoever comes, and it's kind of a first come, first served, but that does not mean that the council doesn't have the discretion to increase or not increase licenses. So that might be where the licensing clerk might have been a little confused.
Okay. All right. So we will, without prejudice, allow you to withdraw your application at this time, pending a reapplication in approximately six months' time.
Under that, but an informed application.
Informed application.
Not more than six months.
Not more than six months. And everything that is on the record tonight would be allowed to be utilized at that point in time also.
But I can still supplement with that.
Yes.
Yes, the record may be supplemented by-
Just so we don't have to go over all this over again.
We don't want to redo what we've already done.
Before you go, chief?
This has really, something the council said during this hearing is that they could give a restaurant license without giving the alcohol license. I think that the council should be aware that we have no BYOB statute ordinance, and that's something that we have to look into for cases, not this particular applicant, but any applicant that comes in here, because we have, if you don't have something that governs this, anyone that comes in with a BYOB, they don't have to worry about any licensing issues. They don't have to worry about any rules to do with hours of operation, anything of that nature. So something that was said in the council, this is something we'll have to address in the near future.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. So to formally close the hearing, I will ask, anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Third and final time, anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
I won't, I really won't be long. Now that I've heard everything said here, and I heard some of you mention that you were thinking about the neighborhood, when whoever goes to make a bar in that, a bar, restaurant, restaurant bar, whatever you want to call it, I'll call it a restaurant with liquor, okay? I'm not, that's not my thing. I'm concerned about the parking, as I said before, and I don't know, I'm not big on town law. I know the police chief here, I've talked to him, Public Works, but could someone look at the area? I mean, take the time and go down there, look at how much space. My house is the one that they're going to park in front of, and in front of Frank's. At least he has a little sidewalk that keeps him away. He'll park right up near the fence. This has nothing to do with who owns it. This has to do with the people who come down there. Whip down on Bay Street, have a great time, take off, and we're cleaning beer bottles and all that crap out. I would like you to look at the area. If no parking areas are viable, no parking within certain time limits, a curb instead of the sidewalk, anything to help protect, which we've been working for, for the last 15 years to put back together. I ask you to keep that on the list, and as high on the list as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, again, I will ask, anyone from the public?
Francis Kura, I heard the lawyer for Mrs. Shaker mentioned about Simpson's Cafe, Abasai, Seabreeze, and all these names, and he says, "And there's always been a bar there." But I've never heard one person say, "Yes, there was a bar there, and there was a parking lot across the street to the left side of my driveway that went with that bar." When they sold the bar, they did not sell the parking lot. Mr. Camber, John Camber, that came in up to the mic after me, owns that property, okay? That's why there was a bar put there, and that's why they had never had a problem with parking. The only parking they got now is to the left side of the building, and it only holds, I would say roughly, maybe fifteen cars. And that's to the side and in the middle. And the rest will be in on the street. And what Mr. Texel just said, they do park up against his fence, and they do park up against my fence, because they jump the curb, and then they would put half of their car on the sidewalk and half in the street. So when people walk down the sidewalk, they can't walk. So I just wanted to let the town council know, just like Mr. Texel said, take a ride down there and look at the area and see the parking. There is a big, big problem with parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Seeing none, this hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, we have a motion regarding-
Withdrawal, without prejudice. Providing the record will be incorporated, and the status quo as far as the number of liquor licenses will only be good for six months.
Up to six months.
Up to six months from today.
The motions, they can all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a public presentation. We're going to take a five-minute break to allow you to get set. Do you need to get set?
All right, don't worry.
Did I say that correctly?
Close. First style.
First style, okay. Chief Civil Engineer, Rhode Island Department of Transportation, regarding proposed roundabouts at the William S. Canning Boulevard and Stafford Road slash Hurst Lane and Stafford and Bogomash Road.
Thank you, Mr. President. As well as, last time we were here was in April, and Francisco Rivera, also Chief Civil Engineer for Rideot, gave the presentation on the roundabouts. We don't have that one queued up. It seemed at that time in April, everybody seemed to understand where we were coming from with the need for roundabouts. It was more on the particulars of the roundabout up at Stafford and Canning. You wanted us to go back, take a look, and including Hurst in as well. And what we have following that presentation, as you mentioned, is the other roundabout that is proposed as part of our H-Sep program, Highway Safety Improvement Program. So I'll just start with, get right into it. This is the roundabout that we had proposed back in April with the, this is, and I apologize, these are right off of plan drawings, they're not colored in, so it might be a little more difficult to see, but this is where the old Stafford, where Stafford Road comes into William S. Canning, and this is the going in the other direction to go northbound on Stafford and Hurst Lane, which is over here, which we had proposed to come out at Hurst, take a right to go around the roundabout to go south on Stafford Road and providing the left turn lane to get in. This design that we had proposed at that time took a number of things into account, staying within the existing geometry of the roadway that would make it a little easier for construction as well as design, as well as the cost of the overall project, and avoided impacts to any environmental issues that could arise with the clearing of the trees on the southern section. As well as the approaches to the roundabout in this scenario, you want them to kind of be separated, so there's a little more time for people exiting the roundabout to see, which if these people are indeed going in this direction or this direction. So that was our proposed, our proposal at that time. There were a number of questions about Hurst Lane, so that we did go back and take a look at it, and, oops, and I went along. And this is what we're looking at with, including Hurst Lane into the roundabout. As I said, to get the deflection at, that's why I shouldn't be in, oh, there we go. To get the deflection angle on William S. Canning Boulevard, we need to kind of bring this down so that it's approaching the round, the circle in this direction, as well as get separation from this move right here. You can see if it stayed on William S. Canning, it would be right at where Stafford Road southbound would be coming out into the roundabout. So by pushing it south, we do, we are able to get Hurst Lane to come in. Again, the concern from an engineering standpoint, that's not a death knell concern, is the closeness of these approaches to themselves. You've got three within the less than 180 degrees. You'd like a little more separation on the approaches to the roundabout. The fact that Hurst Lane is a dead end, and has considerably less volume than the other approaches, makes this to a point where we are comfortable with the proposal as far as not having them equally spaced apart. As you'll see, when we do look at the other intersection at Stafford and Bogomash, being a four-way intersection, they line up a lot better on the approaches. But we did look at this option. It is more expensive, because now you're building offline, so we're going into this area with clearing the trees and building the whole base of the roadway up to meet, you know, to put the 12 inches of gravel, so forth and so on, to bring the roadway up. So there's a considerable number of widening, all within our property, so it's limited right of way. Couple of the benefits by doing this, there was an issue that we were going to be resolving in final design with this property owner here that had driveways that, so that kind of goes away with this alternative, which is a benefit. And so with the additional cost and with the clearing in this area, there's an issue that could arise, not so much an issue, but a design issue of having to do the necessary permitting through DEM. But again, that's just the course of doing business. So it's more of a matter of fact that by going with this type of design, it'll be more expensive. We do have, again, it's not that we can't do it at the cost that we're estimating, but it's more along the lines of when it's ready to advertise, we always got to say cost could be a factor. Cost could be a factor, quite honestly, with an $800,000 roundabout as well, given tough financial times, it's going to find its place in the system. So I think, we just wanted to come across and say, we're comfortable with either alternative, quite honestly. We think, anyway, it's going the wrong way, we think the first alternative has the better, better approaches to the roundabout, the more customary designs that you'll see. It's got the downside of Hurst Lane not being included in it, as well as the, I apologize, as well as, you know, we're comfortable with making this a four-way roundabout as well, and the fact that we can, we own the property is a plus, so the clearing that would be involved and just any potential, it'll extend, certainly will extend the design phase to do any permitting through DEM or any other environmental permit that would be needed. So we wanted to come back, present both, and just put it out on the table that we're comfortable with either. It's your community. If it's a case where you want the Hurst Lane included, we're fine with that, and we'll start either way. Hopefully, we can leave today with an answer on how to proceed. And if you do continue it, we don't want to be on the same night as the previous. So if there are any questions, I'd love to answer them.
I have a quick question. You mentioned this could be a factor with an $800,000 roundabout. What's the cost differential between the two?
About $400,000. So this would be about 1.2 million.
Okay, so it's a million, too.
And these are conceptual estimates, you know, so when it actually goes out to bid, it could be higher or lower, especially given that it'll take about two years, depending on how prices are as well.
Two years to construct?
We're anticipating, I think it'll be about a year to 18 months to get from start of design to end of design, and then advertise award. It would probably be about two years that you'd see a shovel in the ground.
And once shovel goes in the ground, length of construction?
I think it would typically be about one season is what we anticipate for roundabouts, especially a benefit of that is, there is a lot of land as far as that state property. So you'll see, as we're doing work over here, they'll be able to stay on alignment. As we start moving things around, it's a benefit that there is a lot of land to kind of maneuver people through the intersection as we're actually constructing the roundabout.
I had another question, and I'm glad that you brought it up. The gentleman who was here who owns the business south, so that must be east there. Where's his? I drive by there twice a day, but I can't recall where the driveway is in relation to this schematic.
There are curb cuts on the alternate plan.
Okay.
I said, there are curb cuts on the first plan.
Oh, yeah, you can see a little better on this. There's one here.
Oh, there you go.
And I believe the other one's over here. So this is the one that would be coming out right into Splitter Island, so it would have difficulty.
Okay. Again, of the two plans, and I'll only voice my personal opinion, I think the latest one, I think, works, and I will ask the chief regarding Hurst Lane, because we just had another accident there. Hurst Lane and Stafford Road. Well, I, but chief, I will tell you, I drive that every day, and under the old plan, you still have to make a left-hand turn across traffic. And I don't care how you configure it. I mean, every day, I look in my rearview mirror when I make that left-hand turn, because I don't know if they're going to hit me from behind or hit me from the front. And I'll tell you, if you still have to make a left-hand turn across traffic there, I don't care how many signs you put up there to slow it down and whatnot, it's not going to help. That's why we have those accidents that are a slant.
How are you going to?
With the proposals of roundabouts, I went to Miss Greenwich Route 2, and I sat in the, in the tech parking lot, and looked at the configuration. It's a lot busier than our area of Stafford and Canning, significantly so. And it works very well, and I'm very much a proponent of this type of thing coming in. I was here when this first was proposed 11 years ago, and we're still at square one. Steve said we're ready a year ago, first, first project on the drawing board, and that has been materialized. But I understand what you're saying, but I think the sightline is significant enough. Again, you live there, I don't go out there all the time.
I can tell you, chief, whether it's daylight or at night.
Sightline.
The sightline, it doesn't matter, because that's an incline. And as you're coming up, you still don't have a clear sightline, even if they move the road. Because if they're coming fast the other way, until they reach a certain point where you visually see them, and you begin that left-hand turn, you're taking your life in your hands. And I'll tell you, I do it every day.
As you know on your council agenda, I might put a request in for an ordinance to stop the people from going through Jelly Hill Road. It's because of these tie-ups that we're having throughout the community, people are trying to find alternate ways to miss these busy areas. This is one of them. So we need something there. I don't want to settle because of money, but I do know we need something there.
Again, I believe we need something there, whether it's a true four-way, which we wouldn't have, or a three-way, or a stoplight, or something, or a roundabout. But again, my concern is that you still have a group of people that are going to have to make a left-hand turn across traffic. And unfortunately, 80% of them are senior citizens, of which I am one. So you've got to take, you've got to factor that in. And you say it's a one-way, just, and I'm sure you're aware, they're building three condos down on Hurst Lane now. So traffic is going to increase.
The thing that Mr. Scala did say was that it was short sightline and visibility. I mean, that's the only other thing I'm thinking. If you're seeing people, older people, reaction time's going to be tough as well. So rather than have that short distance that they can escape in or adjust, if you have a better sightline, I think I would prefer a sightline over distance, just because their reaction time is so reduced somewhat. Speaking for myself.
So we're talking about, we're talking about the alternate, all right, there's the-
No, we're talking about the first.
The first one is concerns me. And not even coming out of first line.
Let's talk about Plan C, which is the second one, which mitigates most, all those concerns. There are no left-hand turns.
Right. But he is saying that it's too short of a distance between the oncoming and then the exit.
Right.
Which, again, I mean, if you take the roundabout up at, in Lincoln.
Twin River?
Yeah.
East Spanish? Twin River?
The Twin River. Now, that is a tight roundabout with traffic going all over the place. And this is better designed than that one is, in even getting out, where you have much more traffic in a very short, I don't think you've got the 180 feet that you- you've got the 180 feet that you're planning here at that one.
I mean, 180 degrees.
I mean, 180. But again, I think the amount of space you have between the entrance onto that roundabout from Twin River and from River Road is not that great.
Yeah.
You know, and this one's much greater. And again, and I, only from personal experience, I can tell you that even making a right-hand turn under the old one, where now you're going to go down and around to go way back up, you know, to Stafford Road, you know, it just.
But the benefit, you still, the benefit that you really get is the, you do get the safety benefit, and it trickles down. So if you're adjacent to an area that makes people go 20 miles an hour, it's more than a speed limit sign, hoping they go 20 miles an hour. People physically can't go 40. If you're coming down Stafford now, and you want to continue down Stafford, you can't go 40. Same thing with Willie Mescany. If you're coming from Route 24 and you want to go south on Stafford, you just physically can't make this move at 40 miles an hour. So you're taking a left turn out of Hurst, you're dealing with slower traffic. If you can, then it was poorly designed. Because the whole idea of the roundabout is you have to, by the geometry of it, it makes you go around a small circle, as opposed to, the rotaries were designed such that you kept your main speed at a high velocity, and that's why the crashes that they had at, roundabouts tend to be severe, because your speeds are higher. But, you know, so those are things that, if people are going through a roundabout at 40 miles an hour, it wasn't designed correctly.
Again, I will, I will raise my own personal opinion.
No, and I understand, and, you know, the council had asked us to take another look at it, and we did. And to be honest, you know, we can, both as alternatives, I think you'll get safety benefits from both, and it becomes to the preference of the council.
Now, Ed, the second plan you like better, but it's less time, this traffic is going to be right there, as opposed to, you have more time to look before they arrive.
You know, again, even though they say we'll slow them down, the speed that they're going to be coming into this point, for these people to pull out of here, is still going to be fast. And again, my major concern is the left-hand turn. Even though you've got, you know, a section where you pull over, if you get more than two cars or three cars there, you're dead in the water.
Yeah, it could stack up, right.
You know, and again, so now you're trying to kind of cross, again, traffic coming into a long stretch. You're not at the roundabout, you're coming into a long stretch. So they are going to be going faster than when you're coming directly into the road, into the roundabout.
Yeah, but they will be slowing down, I mean, they have to. You know, but you're right, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be free flow, because then they will end up probably rear-ending somebody in the roundabout if they go that fast, yeah.
The first plan really doesn't help at all.
My favor is for the second, new one.
Yeah.
That's where I'm putting it.
I have a quick question. This, on Plan C, the approach from the northwest, right? No, yes, northwest. Coming from Fall River, yeah, coming from Fall River up, is, what does that going to, what does that look like topographically, or, I know it kind of swings you out, and it seems to me, just looking at it, there's, that's the straightest line through the roundabout. Or at least, it looks like it on mine. When I look at it at a distance, it doesn't look so straight. But are people going to, people are going to be forced to slow down? I mean, it seems like they would have the least amount of requirement to slow down if they were going, continuing on Stafford Road.
Yeah, and this.
Because they could just, like, hang right and.
Yeah, this is a conceptual plan. This will be, the whole idea of the roundabout is the splitter island, you should really be facing, heading right towards the middle to make you slow down and go almost like an S curve, go to the right and then back to the left. So the, like, you kind of want your center line to be going right through the middle of it. And you can see, like, with these, you're kind of off to the right. We can adjust these to try and, and that's the whole idea of swinging these people out, is to try and get them to come back in toward the middle of the roundabout.
Get them to head right into the center, so that they turn.
Yeah, and the, so for the other one, you know, the center of it is, it's lining up a little better with the middle of the roundabout, which is, you know, but those are things, again, these are conceptual plans.
Yeah.
Because I did notice that, too, like, with the, this approach, I mean, obviously, we're dealing within our right-of-way, and so we can kind of try and get this to get the, as good a deflection as we can, it'll probably look a little better than that.
Great. I like Plan C. I think it checks all our boxes, and it'll be a great improvement from what's there currently.
Absolutely.
Anyone else in the council?
I agree with Concept Plan C. It takes care of the business with their second entrance, and it includes the Hurst Lane into the roundabout.
I guess the concern I have for Plan C is what you mentioned, it's going to cost $40,000 more.
Right. Well, it's estimated.
Estimated. I guess I have concern about what that, that's going to take much longer than we imagined, to probably get.
Well, we have, in the tip, this is State Traffic Commission approved, so we do have line items in the tip to handle things that are approved by the State Traffic Commission. So every year, the funding, our whole pot of money can be different based on what obligations we have already. But the, but it is something that we can, it will be programmed. You know, it's not like we get to the finished line of design and wait three years to put it out to construction. I don't think that would happen. That would be a very unusual circumstance for a project that's ready. Because the longer it waits, the more stale it gets, the more designs change, and then you end up spending more design money to go back and alter things. So it's, while, but I did want to put it out there so that 18 months from now, you're not misled if we can't put it out right when it's, right when it's ready. But I don't think the delay would be on the matter of years to resolve any funding issues that we have with federal highway.
I truly support the second option. It's the only option that eliminates any turning, either going left in or going left out. It's completely a circular pattern, which reduces high-impact accidents. And I think it'll slow traffic down, and I think it's the perfect solution for that intersection, would be the second, having the roundabout right at Hurst Lane. It's all within state property, there's no property takings. It doesn't seem like there's wetlands or issues, or there's issues, they're probably clearing more than an acre of land that puts them into a couple of more permits, but I think it's a nice design, they did a very good job.
Do we need a motion?
I don't know if we need a vote, because it's not, I don't know if the final design is binding on this, on the council.
Yeah, just for the record, then, I'll express my view that I'd like the second design better, too.
Andy, do we need a vote on this, to give them our thumbs up?
Yeah. Yes, I think so.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff?
Yes, the one thing I would like to ask the council to consider, if you look at one side of that property, as you can attest, Mr. Roderick, there's a big construction business in there that has big trucks coming in, in and out all the time. If you get it back, and this has been an experience, I don't know if anybody in the council works or goes down on Connell Highway in Newport around 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning. The rotary that was there would function perfectly, no matter whether people were backed up going into Gate 1 at Naval Station Newport or not. Now, it's been renovated to a roundabout. When the traffic backs up from the base, that roundabout, you can't move. Nobody else can move within that roundabout because of that exact reason. If you get a lot of tractor-trailer trucks, or any type of delivery trucks, in either of those businesses, because there are two businesses that are going to be affected by this roundabout for deliveries, and it causes a traffic backup, nothing's going to be able to move within this roundabout. That is the drawback for the roundabout itself. The second plan does look like a better plan. I do know, I have had to turn into your neighborhood, you know, for work. It is dangerous right now. Just with this roundabout, just think, as far as traffic as well, if the traffic backs up, you're still running into a risk of a rear-end collision, somebody coming up onto the traffic jam that they're not expecting. Thank you.
At this point, I will entertain a motion.
If you want, and I understand what you're saying, you know, in traffic, there's no design that will get no backup 24 hours a day yet. But the safety benefits of the roundabout as well, for 24 hours out of the day, or if it's 20, 23 and a half hours out of the day, should outweigh any temporary congestion with delivery trucks. And we do try to accommodate, the design will accommodate trucks, people going through. But if someone's making a delivery and they block a lane, that's kind of, that's beyond design, you know.
I move that we, what's the best way to say this, that we indicate to Rhode Island DOT our support for Concepts Plan C for the roundabout at Canning Boulevard and Stafford Road, Hurst Lane.
Second. Your motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Now we can go to Bliss.
Thank you, good evening. We are here to discuss a little bit on the proposed improvements to Bliss Corner, and this is an intersection that was determined a long time ago, 2003? 2005, there was a location with a high number of crashes. And at that time, we look at not only the crashes, but also the operations of that intersection. And with that, we use our consultant to determine several alternatives that could improve the operations and the safety at that location. In 2006, 2005, there were, the study identified there were about 48 crashes, and 14 of them caused an injury, which is a significant amount, if you think about an intersection. And it's a signalized intersection. At that time, the level of service that was measured was not very good, especially in the southbound direction in the afternoon. When we projected these volumes 25 years in the future, we actually found out that the intersection was very likely to fail. The roundabout was the proposed alternative that actually carried the best benefit-cost ratio, as well as operational benefits. This is the, just a small aerial picture of a location south of the roundabout that the council just recently approved. And it helps us, roundabout helps us, similar to the roundabout that we just discussed, to accommodate geometries that are skewed. This one is not an ideal intersection for a highway design perspective on, to accommodate a signal, because the angle of the different approaches are not right angles. So a roundabout in this case would actually help the operations, because you don't have to see the red signal, you don't have to hope that the person that is coming from one of the approaches that has a red is going to effectively stop. With a roundabout, you will actually have the geometry that helps cue driver approaching that they have necessarily to slow down, or they're going to hit the curb. So overall, it will be, it will be much better operations. There are different speed limits in this area, but overall, it's around 40 miles an hour. But you can tell that posted speed limit is one thing, operational speed is, could be slightly different. The volumes that were measured, we actually count how many people were going left, right through at this intersection. And as you can tell, in the southbound direction, we have a heavy volume relatively compared to the other ones, of drivers going through as well as left turns. That actually is a big concern, because you, when you're at a signal and you're hoping to make a left turn, you may be looking for a gap on the oncoming traffic. You may not be paying attention to a pedestrian that is crossing the street with the same, in the same direction as you. This is not necessarily the case for this intersection, that we have a lot of pedestrian activity. But if the town is looking to increase the amount of pedestrian activity in this area, a roundabout is certainly a good alternative. As I was saying, the study showed that we had a .77 index, which had to do with number injury collisions per million vehicles that entered the intersection. And this is one of the intersections with the highest number of crashes that we had in this particular area of the study that we had. Most of the factors were the speed, lack of lighting, a certain number of those crashes occur at night, and weather. Most of the crashes were rear-end collisions, which happens when at a signal, someone says the green or the yellow, the person ahead decides that they want to stop, the person behind feels that there's enough time to cross, and they don't necessarily are in the same page, so they end up in a rear-end collision. Which granted, those type of crashes could still occur at a roundabout, but the high severity crashes, where someone is going at a right angle, are completely eliminated from a roundabout. This is just a couple of slides that show the type of crashes that occur at this intersection as it is now. Some of them have to do with activity at the driveways, which is the type of crashes that you expect in an area where you have accesses like that. Some of the crashes had to do with some people trying to make a left turn and not finding a good gap in the oncoming traffic. And this is the same in these locations. So there were a certain number of deficiencies that were found that this, from the operational, from the engineer perspective. Couple of pictures of how the intersection looks. And what we're proposing to have is not only install a roundabout at this location, and at the same time eliminate this traffic signal. And with that, we will be able to provide pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, making sure that every side of the, every entrance of the roundabout has crosswalks and the proper wheelchair ramps, and they're accessible for everybody. Some drainage improvements, landscaping and access management. This is a very good point, because the way that this intersection looks today is practically a sea of pavement. With a roundabout, you would have the opportunity to have some landscaping in the central island. This is something that we mentioned in April when we came. There are some towns, some communities that decide that a roundabout could be a great gateway to get, enter the area or the district. And we would be very likely looking for someone in the community if they want to have some landscaping to take over for the maintenance of the landscape, and have a sign saying this roundabout, central island is maintained by certain business, business district, the same way that I was very happy to hear that Chief Blakely is actually going to other roundabouts in the state to see how they're operating. So those roundabouts have the ability to either be built by state funds, but most of the roundabouts we have in the state, we're actually very fortunate that some of the developers are actually paying for the, we're paying for the installation of them, and as such, you can actually see in some of those roundabouts in the state that they have a big sign of the businesses, like, could be the Ponson Development Corporation, or the Twin River, now a casino. This is a plan which doesn't do a really good justice on these. I want to point out that while we have a good certainty that a roundabout worked great... I want to point out that while we have a good certainty that a roundabout worked great here, we have some need to acquire certain, some portions of property to be able to have the pavement and the sidewalks that we're proposing. So there will be some minor takings. And again, from us in this side, these miners, we understand that for a property owner, a small piece of land could be, could be a lot, we do not necessarily, we don't want to minimize the impacts that, that would have on, on the property owners. This is a rendering of the proposed intersection. If you can actually see, the, the angle between this leg and this leg is such that we need to provide this additional slip lane, so any big tractor trailer, big truck that is circulating this area has enough space to, to cross. And we are pretty comfortable with the current, even though it is, would not have a signal control, the fact that it's just one lane and vehicles in one direction that persons crossing on food or, or on a wheelchair that they have to negotiate, they have the ability to cross just one leg at a time and one direction of traffic at a, at a time. There shouldn't be any issues. The other thing that we want to brought to your, bring to your attention is that in this plaza where there is a Dunkin' Donuts, this, the services here, due to the number of crashes that occur at this parking lot and the very short distance that we have to stack, that exists to stack cars, we're proposing to extend this median, raise median to prevent people from making left turns into this business. However, they will still have access when they go through the roundabout, as well as people who are exiting this business and want to go in this direction or want to go in this direction, they can exit through here and then use a roundabout to, to reach their desired destination. This is just a view from a different perspective. On this other side, we actually have properties that require access, that do not have cross access between the different properties. So we're proposing to have a two-way left turn lane, so people can actually get off the travel path and allow true traffic to continue while they wait for a gap and make a left into or take a left out of this property. And again, this is just a few renderings. The concept of a roundabout here, we feel that is very beneficial in terms of operations, in terms of the safety benefits that will have for the community. We would like to have, to hear your, your ideas on how this resonates with the, with the town, and understanding that a concept now would allow us to move forward towards final design, and we would work with the town and with the property owners to minimize the impacts that it would have, that the, a project would have in their, in their land. And again, we're proposing to close those, those accesses, but if, if the town or the property owner feels that there is a dire need to have those accesses, those accesses, we can work a solution that could benefit everybody, and especially the safety of the, everybody who is using the road. Then from, from here, I can answer any questions that the council has.
Have you been in touch with our planning board or the interim planner, Kate Michaud? I asked that question because they've been putting together for the last couple of years, I believe, various plans for that neighborhood. And you might as well work in conjunction with her. I've seen any number of plans that that group has put together. Yeah, that's right, you were on the, on that panel. I would suggest that one thing that you do is get in touch with Kate Michaud and get in touch with our planning board, because they already have a number of plans for that whole area. Or have I misstated something? That's my assumption.
Yeah, what was, it was a comprehensive plan.
There was a federal highway safety traffic study that was done on that intersection within the last two years. So at the very least, I mean, they'll have that, but.
Yes, and that's something like, it was on the slide that I completely skipped. This intersection was part of, let me find that slide.
Yeah, safety audit.
Yeah, there was a safety, safety assessment performed in 2011, and it was a peer-to-peer program where people from other states came, and they looked at the concept of roundabout, and they were very supportive of that. So we, we had that into account. I apologize for not mentioning that, that part. This is something that was studied at the time, and they, they support the installation of a roundabout.
The only thing I will say is to talk about the impact on the businesses there. I know you've got a gas station on one corner, which that would impact, I think, their pumps, because if you cut it, you know, they may not be able to have that swing to get in. And then where the Dunkin' Donuts is, if you're coming from the south.
South, oh.
No, if you're coming from the west, headed east of Boogamash, to get to the Dunkin' Donuts, you'd have to actually go all the way to the roundabout and around and into, you know. So I'm just, I'm just pointing out.
I actually think, I like to, because I'm in there several times a week, not for Dunkin' Donuts, but for the kids' dance school there, but it is, not for me, for my daughter. And I'd say, I, I have to pull in there, I have to make a left-hand turn into there often, and it, with the traffic coming in at that drive-thru, it's a, it's a cluster of a sort of situation over there. So I appreciate that fact, kind of considering that, and perhaps that might get eased if you can only make a right into it and make a right out of it. That is a terrible design, as far as I'm concerned.
It would also eliminate the, using that parking lot as, you know, a circumvent.
Yeah, around the lights.
For the light, because that happens frequently enough when there's a lot of traffic and you want to turn left, people just cut straight across the parking lot and bound out down Boogamash. I think it's great. I think any effort to reduce the seeming, it just seem, when you get there, and every time we talk about this, when you get to that intersection, it is, it's just open. There's nothing there, there's the sky, the buildings are set way back from the road. It creates this, you know, almost like a stadium effect, that you're, you're right in the center of it, and there's, there's no safety, there's no perceived safe way of traveling for pedestrians. It just doesn't feel like a comfortable place to be, and I think this is terrific. And I'm a huge fan of striping and landscaping and paint the road orange if you have to, and medians and cobblestones and visually distinctive surfaces.
I just have, I actually have one more question. I do want to echo the, the more pedestrian-friendly thing. I think now that we have our library going in there and the potential for additional foot traffic, I think that's a real big benefit. Is this schematic accurate as far as how far down each of the roads the proposed sidewalks are going to go?
Not necessarily. The, there is just a concept of how, how long they could be, there is not definite, we have not determined how long they're going to be. It's just at a conceptual level.
Because to pick up on Mr. Lambert's point about connecting with Kate Michaud, I think if there's an opportunity to create some synergy with this sort of project, and we know that the sidewalks in that general kind of Bliss Four Corners area, especially if we try to develop it as a kind of, you know, economic business district, you know, perhaps we can knock a couple birds with one stone there and build some synergy there.
I have a question to ask over to Kate about that. With the Safe Roads Act, there are some funds available and grants for sidewalks in conjunction with the library. That may be the upper two times in.
Yeah, if you're, if you're in there doing stuff already, why not? Yeah, totally.
Funds for that for the sidewalk.
Because that would, I mean, that would be great to be able to have, because people do use the sidewalk. I mean, I think we've seen with, without a shadow of a doubt, what sidewalks can do to like the north end of town, and what that does for putting people out there for walking their dog, going for exercise, all that sort of thing. And it helps with local businesses, and I would love to see that happen down here as well.
Yeah, and just to address the comment about the median and the inability for someone taking a left in or out of the Dunkin' Donuts. There was a case in the state of Colorado, Golden, Colorado, where the, again, that was a corridor, but the fact that the city's forced roundabouts in a corridor in a business, business district, and made everybody who was accessing the businesses going around the circles and taking a right instead of making lefts. The business community was very concerned about the effects that that was going to have on their sales. The study actually found that throughout the years, this area had actually more tax revenue than other areas of the city, because the fact that it felt safe attracted more customers coming to this area. So it's not necessarily guaranteed that that, that will happen here, but that's one of the cases that I am aware of, where roundabouts, instead of hurting the businesses, actually improve their, their, their sales because of the safety effect, the safety feeling of the area where they were located.
I have to add that, at the Dunkin' Donuts section, where you're not allowing a left turn heading east, that's actually good, because like Bill, I've been in there too and off of dance lessons. And I was getting, I was getting my nails done. And one thing that has, that diagram is not actually representing is its actual incline. There's a hill there. And pulling out of there at night is much easier than pulling out during the day, because I can see headlights coming from up the hill. I can't see that during the day, so you're like, oh, boy, I better. That is tough there. And actually eliminating that left turn even in, because stopping there, trying to take that left turn, cars coming up the hill can't see a car stopped there. And working at Gibbons on the corner where the bank is now, many years I've seen, I don't know how many rear-end collisions just on that side, just for that reason.
Yeah, and again, the, the access for anybody going from, coming from everywhere or going anywhere after using the Dunkin' Donuts is still there, they just have to use a roundabout. And unlike the signal, once you get there and nobody is in conflict with you, you can go through the intersection.
Maybe just one thing to look at is, since you can't take a left back onto Boogamash, everyone's going to be going toward the gas station, possibly. You might have to look at how that's going to be in and out of there. Because you could look, I think, I can't tell by the drawing, but it looks like you could take a left onto Stafford Road, through the parking lot.
There's a left center lane on the gas station side.
Right, but coming out of the parking lot, you could still take a left onto Stafford. So that might have to be, because the traffic is going to be directed that way if they want to go back through. So you might have some backups within the parking lot, so I'm not sure how that's going to work out.
Yeah, no, we definitely can look into that.
Yeah.
Just one, one comment. I remember the study that Jay alludes to, and I think the, one of the options that were, one of the conclusions was that the headed east by the Dunkin' Donuts, that we have that hill, they would reduce the level of that hill to make it more flatter.
Change the grade.
Change the grade to, so that people could see people coming over the hill and, with the hill there, you can't see the signal sign. So you can't see the people backed up, and you just kind of run into them. So I'm concerned about that. There would be a grade change, as well as, I think Jim mentioned, is the businesses and how it would impact their entry and exits. Take some of the burden off of Boogamash and put it onto Stafford, and that's where I would be concerned.
Yeah, I believe that we are not changing any of the accesses, right? It's the only one that we're changing or affecting is the, the access to Dunkin' Donuts. Or I shouldn't say the access, the access from that side to that plaza.
I just don't want everybody like exiting from the gas station and from that plaza all at the same time onto Stafford Road, and yet that, you'll have more congestion at that end versus splitting it up a little bit, because you had two entrances and people could enter and exit on, on Boogamash from the Dunkin' Donut end. So you might be moving the issue from one road to another. That's all I'm saying.
Certainly, and those are.
I'd be concerned about that.
Yeah, no, certainly. And those are specific design details that we can address in the different levels of design with the town and with the property owners, to make sure that their concerns are taken consideration. And as well, every, every stage of design will make sure that we coordinate with the town and Mr. Town Engineer to, to take.
Certainly, I would want input from the businesses, the owners, property owners.
Certainly, and anticipating that there will be some land takings, we will have lengthy conversations with them to mitigate the, in, not just the cost, for buying the land for the cost, but also any offset, mitigate any effects that the, this site has on their property.
Just one final question. How granular does the data, the traffic count data get? It just gives you pretty much a number going one way, the other way, and who's turning, and so it wouldn't really, we wouldn't be able to determine how many people are turning out of the parking lot and which way they go. You would just, that would sort of be just baked into the base number. Okay.
Yeah, the counts that we took were specifically to add the intersection where they come in after the intersection.
Yeah, okay. So actually, you wouldn't even get those numbers of, that doesn't, I'm just sort of thinking out loud. So the people that were taking the left-hand turn into Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, you might not necessarily even capture those people, because they may exit before they hit the intersection, and then where they go, if they take a right back out, they're not counted at all. But those people are going to be funneled now through the roundabout. So yeah, that's, you got some work on that for you. Good luck.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we did not take in consideration for this, but but overall, we, we do not anticipate that the numbers are significant enough to change the, the analysis.
Okay. I think conceptually, anything that improves that intersection is great. And I think a roundabout is good. Again, we have to look at the impact it has on the businesses there, and figure out the correct traffic flow. I love the center turn lane. Whether you can do that on the other side also, you know, obviously that's something you'll have to look at. You know, I'm talking about on the Stafford to Crandall.
Straight.
Which is the straight, not the Boogamash side, but Stafford to Crandall.
No, you're looking at.
Oh, this one.
Right. You know, whether or not you have that on both sides, because you do have a restaurant on one side.
Yeah.
And a bank, you know, on, on this, which is on Crandall. You know, so coming up from like Little Compton or South Tivian Way, then to be able to go into that restaurant or to go into the bank, you know, it's right there, it's not at the corner, but it's in precedents, so if it is a median that they can't cross, now you're forcing them to go all the way down, around, and then back. You know, so I think those are the things you have to look at. You know, the access to those businesses at a rate, a little bit down from the intersection itself.
Yeah.
But I think conceptually, I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, I think if we can get people in and out of this neighborhood faster and safer, then, you know, keeping that in mind, businesses should really see this as a, an opportunity. And we should continue to keep them in the loop. But I like it, it's great.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, appointments and resignations, unfinished business, unfinished financial business, town administrator.
Mr. President, before you is a, a transfer that goes back to fiscal year 14. I want to be clear about that. I want to be clear about that. That what I'm trying to do here is clean up the books and demonstrate the actual effect and impact of different expenditures and where they're actually hitting the budget. There will be no change to the operational surplus of the town resulting from fiscal year 14 as a result of this transfer. Transfer details where the money's coming from to pay a bill that we've already paid. And I think it's important, I also want to send a message here about two things. One is the street light is a physically static item. It sits there, it doesn't change. The light comes on, the light goes off. Doesn't mean that it costs the same every single year. It doesn't. National Grid goes to the Public Utilities Commission with tariff rate filings every year. And a very large component of our street lighting cost is the actual maintenance cost on the light itself. Not because it's driven by the actual cost of maintaining streetlights, but because at this point, they load so many of their overhead costs into that maintenance cost. The municipalities in the state of Rhode Island pay $94 per street light in maintenance every single year. So it ends up being, not exactly half, but a very large portion of what we pay as a municipality for streetlights. So it's not just the power going to the light. And so all of these cost components change every single year. The other thing that's very important is when we budget, we have to look ahead. Now, I wasn't here, okay? First of all, those rate filings for maintenance costs can change. Secondly, the cost of energy can change under our contract with Direct Energy. It's not necessarily a flat price every single year, so the budget needs to take into consideration the fact that that price will escalate under the terms of our three-year agreement. The budget process also has to take into consideration when those three-year agreements expire. It happens that this year, our power contract will expire. We've been paying six cents. The current rate, the current municipal free rate, so if you don't have an agreement with grid, we only pay 13 cents. So Direct Energy's coming back to us with a contract for another three years that will lock us in at nine, which is substantial savings from 13, but a very large increase from six. So when we look at the budget process, we have to absolutely make sure that we're, mayor's administration are detailing for the town council and for the budget committee, those foreseeable changes in rates. So what happened this year is, to the best of my understanding, the town treasurer asked me, you know, we're $13,430 and some odd cents. Short, we didn't capture the change that was filed in the cost of streetlights. I think we have to demonstrate that. We understand that going forward, we are always going to disclose what we're actually spending in every account. The second thing, message I want to send is, my personal view is, I'd like to get away from consulting services and professional technical services being locked into a budget. I think they ought to be justified every single year by a project that's up and coming in that area. Now, maybe they have, maybe they haven't, but I won't put downward pressure on these accounts, and that includes tax sale because that's a professional service. It's an attorney that handles it for us. But those things, as we get tighter and tighter and tighter on how this budget operates and what we might end up with at the end of the year, we've got to make sure that we provide the services that are absolutely vital to people's safety and welfare. And we restrict to the greatest extent possible professional, technical, and consulting services throughout our administration. So that's why I went specifically to those four accounts. It's just sending a message, though. Because at the end of the day, last fiscal year does not change the size of our surplus in my opinion is a more honest disclosure of what it actually costs to light the streets. So I ask for your opinion.
Yes. Dave Perry, Senator Brandon Lee, and Chairman of the Budget Committee. I didn't come here tonight to defend our budget, but I guess I'm going to have to. First of all, when we looked at these, and when you also looked at them, you looked at five-year averages, correct?
This past year.
This past year, you looked at five-year averages?
This is not.
And this is, this is the one. This is it. This is it. And we also looked at it. So as far as streetlights, we put in $155,000, which is an increase of 5,000. Okay? Now, they might have gone up. I'm not going to argue with you about that. But what we're doing is, we're taking 3982 out of professional services and planning board. The comprehensive plan update consultant, that's exactly what it was for. It was for a consultant for the comprehensive plan, which I believe is complete. Now, whether they used the $10,000 or didn't, I don't know. So you're going to hit that account for another $6,417. We go to the next page, professional and technical services, and that's coming out of a tax assessor. $801, it was budgeted for $2,500. And it's all going into, oh, I'm sorry, one more, tax sale. We had $3,000 in for tax sale. We now have, you took out 264249, so we have around $350 for tax sale. Apparently, we don't need that kind of money, so next year, we'll cut it back to $350.
Right, and I think that's the exercise. I think we have to disclose.
Excuse me, before we go any further, you cannot make statements taking it out because when you look at the budget next year.
No, I'm saying we don't need it.
Excuse me. You don't know if you don't need it. When you look at the budget next year, you will look at next year's budget. You cannot make statements saying that we don't need it because next year, we may need consulting services, we may need dollars for tax sales. So every year's budget has to be looked at individually. You cannot make statements saying because we didn't use it this year, we don't need it next year.
Mr. Rogers, consultant services will be taken out because the comprehensive plan is done.
Again, each item has to be looked at.
Absolutely. And that's what we do.
That's all I'm saying.
And that's what we do every year.
You can't just say that items will come out of the budget until we look at a budget.
The bottom line is.
And we're not at that point.
The bottom line is, and can I speak? Do I have the floor? The bottom line is, this is going into streetlights, correct? Streetlights are paid at the end of the year. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Monthly charge.
What was that?
Monthly charge.
A monthly charge. Okay, a monthly charge. Why don't we wait until the fourth quarter to touch any kind of money? And I got a reason for that. The reasoning is, it skews the process. Because when you people look at the budget as a town council, and the budget committee looks at the budget next year, we look at it in probably March, and we're not going to remember what happened September 22 at 10 of 10 at a town council meeting, and that money was transferred. We're going to see expenditures in those accounts for whatever the money is. And it's not going to say, transfer it. It's going to say, expended. We're not going to remember that. I guarantee you that. And that's where it gets screwed.
Can I ask a real quick question?
It's really important. I don't think we're talking about the same thing, Dave.
No, I don't think we are.
We're talking about last year.
Last year's budget, Dave.
Why are we, I'm closing the books and trying to get accurate numbers for the actual on expended.
It's nothing to do with the budget you're looking at.
It does.
No, it's last year. This is house cleaning.
It's 2014.
Why aren't last year's bills paid already? That comes out, doesn't it come out of the general fund at the end of the year?
They are, they're in fiscal 2015.
You're still doing transfers from last year?
No.
Yes, but this is a cleanup. Because the bill that paid.
Yes.
Yeah.
Last year, 2014.
Years passed, your town administrator didn't do this. They just let it go.
Right.
I'm trying to make it clean.
Dave, we've already spent the money in there. He's just showing that it went there. It wasn't, it's.
So you're not touching this year's budget at all?
No, sir. This is, this is 1314, not 1450.
Right, it's not what you're looking at.
It's not the budget.
No.
No.
We've already spent the money, but the transfers weren't done. He just wants to show.
He's cleaning up the books. Because otherwise, you would have a negative in one and a plus in another.
I understand.
And all he's doing is cleaning up the books to show that the funds were expended.
It has nothing to do with that. It's kind of.
I think the lesson learned here is that we have to actually communicate that this is from, on the agenda, there's no way to know that.
I did say it, but.
Well, on the agenda, I'm sure he's going by.
That's all I want you to do is have the best possible information about what we actually spent.
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to do every year.
Yeah. So I don't want to show you a deficit in this streetlight account. I want, when we come back and show, report actuals, and then compare to them to what we're doing this year and what we're asking for next year, you'll have the best available data. And I won't be explaining in the future that there was some lack of effort to do the transfers that were necessary to clean up the books.
Because, Dave, he wouldn't have had to ask us to transfer this because of the small amount it is. So he's just showing that's actually what we're spending, what we spent last year. So this will help us doing the next budget because we'll have actually what we spent.
Well, then your wording is wrong on here.
Yeah, you're right. I got confused.
That's what I said. It wasn't communicating. It looks like you're taking it.
If the wording's unclear, I apologize, but do you see where I'm coming from there?
Thank you very much. I apologize also.
The first thing he said.
Do you have to vote on this or no?
Do you have any on it?
You have to vote on it, yes.
No, the assumption that I was under was that it was this fiscal year, you know, if this is something that, you know, like Mr. Ruda said, you know, that's from the year, the fiscal year prior, that should be conveyed, you know, on the agenda. You know, that's kind of, you know, misconception, a lot of people are upset about it, so, you know, that is cleaning up the books and.
Right, fine. We couldn't possibly be at a shortfall already this year.
Well, that was the thing that was upsetting me. It's like, you know, we're in quarter one on this budget and we're already making transfers.
No.
You know, that's kind of, you know, who messed up is what I was wanting to know.
No, nobody messed up.
And we don't point fingers.
The other thing, I am starting to already warn you that there are changes to the cost of energy that we can insulate the town from partially, but not entirely, and that will be reflected in the budget that I submit next year.
The one thing when it comes to the streetlights, has anything been looked into asking National Grid to turn these lights to more energy-efficient lighting?
Absolutely. So there is a municipal buying group that's forming, and I'm not going to tell you I have a strong opinion one way or the other. I just think, the only strong opinion I have is that we need to look into it. And the notion is to use a financing mechanism to actually purchase the lights from National Grid, take that $94 a year per light and maintenance and reduce it down actually to single digits. So it becomes a self-financing mechanism. You purchase your lights, you save so much money on maintenance that you actually pay for the purchase in the first year.
Correct.
And then step two would be, once you control your lights, you can control the bulbs you put in your lights at your own pace and.
Well, if the lights are changed to LEDs, you don't even need any bulbs. I know all of that, you know, I'm an electrician, so I know, you know, we deal with a lot of commercial stuff. So I know, yeah.
And I just wanted to, Denise made a comment that the administrator wouldn't have had to come to us for such a small amount of money. He would have, $2,500 is the minimum. And what we have, well, he could have, he could have done what has been done in the past, which is to break it up into 15 different little $2,000 transfers and then do it himself. And we want to get out of the habit of doing that sort of stuff so that we don't sit at the table with the budget in front of us and go, this doesn't make any sense. We have deficits, we have surpluses, and it doesn't make any sense where these numbers came from. So I like this way, even though it hurts a little bit to look at.
Okay, all right. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries. New business, Tom Ramatowski, Chair, Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, proposed changes to Section 54 Town Code and schedule for public hearing on October 27.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is basically the same thing we had back in December that was referred to the town attorney and I guess dropped off the schedule. But we really do need to move forward on it because there are some issues here that have gotten worse over the summer, especially with regard to dogs running rampant in the beach dunes and causing damage, and also an individual that was hunting and trapping rabbits in the conservation area, which we really don't want to allow, it's not supposed to be occurring. So we need these changes. And we also, at the beginning part, there's some changes that have been proposed to how to define the boundaries. If you look at the old version, it's a bit confusing. It refers to things like Saconnet Point and some other things where, it actually refers to where, in typical Rhode Island status, where the playground was rather than where the playground is. And so you and I and everybody knows what that means, but if you read it now, it doesn't make any sense because the playground got moved. So we need to change things. We're trying to put it into boundaries by the roads rather than items like the playground or these points or these areas that people are not really sure exactly where they're at. And the only other change is that it assigns responsibility for the boat ramp to the Harbor Commission. Right now, it's kind of orphaned out there, nobody's really responsible for it. And it does sort of fall into their area, and they're not opposed to taking on that responsibility, as I understand. So these changes would be beneficial to that section of the code, and we just need to have them checked for, you know, legal consistency and accuracy before the hearing.
So Tom, just to be clear, leashed animals are not permitted May 1 through whatever the day before Columbus Day is?
That's the understanding. That may be something that we need clarification on if we, if we don't say it, does that cover it? Or do we have to be explicit, saying if we're saying that in the off-season, this is what goes on, do we have to say no animals during the season?
Yes.
Because I'm not sure then, they might need to change that even on the beach section. So I'm not sure it says that. Because this is taken exactly from the beach section. It just didn't extend into the conservation area.
Now, signage says no animals allowed, correct?
It may just say that during the off-season, you can have leashed animals. I'm going to double-check right now real quick to see if it says that they're not allowed at all during the regular season.
There's no pets or domesticated animals.
See, it only talks about during the off-season. It doesn't say anything about during season. So that may be something else we need to add or put in there that, it's understood that they're not allowed during the season for obvious reasons. You want to make sure where you're stepping, it's sand is sand, not something else, but.
Well, I think it just, because it does state, except as permitted, on beach areas as described below, which tells you only in the off-season. But it probably should be specific, saying that no pets or domesticated animals are allowed at any recreation area from whatever to whatever.
Right. That's something, again, that maybe, you know, needs to be added in to clarify that. But the real problem that we're having is that it doesn't, it doesn't address the conservation area at all, and we put a lot of effort into developing the dunes and vegetation. And this season, there's been a guy letting a bunch of beagles run rampant through that, and they've dug their own paths and, you know, damaged the vegetation, and we need to stop that. And the animal control officers have no help because he or she, I forget who it is, points out there's nothing in the rules that say that can't go on. So we need a little bit of help there.
Okay. And just for my own edification, the section regarding the boat ramp.
Yes.
It says comes under the Harbor Commission.
Right.
So what would be inserted is there rules and regulations for boat ramps?
No, I would just insert it into here because this section divides up the town-owned area at Fogland as recreation and conservation, and it totally didn't address the ramp. This just makes it clear that they would be responsible for the ramp, you know, that recreation would have basically everything south of the main long paved road, and that conservation would have everything north of that long paved road down in that area. That's what it's meant to do. If there's clarifications or better ways of wording it, that's fine.
Yeah, because if I read this, it just says Harbor Management Commission Fogland Boat Ramp, doesn't tell me really, you know, what the responsibility is, who's responsible for it.
Well, it's under this 54-28 Designated Areas and Responsible Commission. So under that, it would say Harbor Management Commission Fogland Boat Ramp, eastern, the one at the eastern end of that road, Fogland Road.
I know, but the whole section, the whole audible is specifically for Recreation, Conservation, and Open Space and Land Preservation Commissions. So this is specifically for those three commissions. So now you're adding this one particular item. And under the Recreation Commission, you have, under the 54-28, you have all public rights of way to coastal waters, including but not limited to State Street and Jack's Island Beach access. including but not limited to State Street and Jack's Island Beach access. So you have some access. Does that come under the Harbor Commission or is this just the boat ramp, you know?
I thought the rights of ways to the water were pretty much being given over to the Harbor Commission, but I may be wrong.
Hence my concern here. What, where does that fall? Because the Harbor, there's a Harbor plan, and I know that they have right-of-way information in that, in their Harbor plan. But so I don't know if you're trying to mix apples and oranges in one ordinance that's specifically focused on recreation, conservation, and the open space and land preservation commissions.
That may need to be looked at, because I'm not sure if that's even, if that's how that's interpreted nowadays. I think Harbor Commission sort of took charge of these right-of-ways to the water.
Yeah. Again, I'm...
Hence the need for a review.
Yeah, I will defer to the council. I would think that it would be a note in that area saying, please see Harbor Commission chapter, whatever, regarding rules and regulations on boat ramp or access or, you know, whatever.
It just needs to be orphaned out there. The group felt it would be better if it was given to somebody just to watch over, look over, report back to you if it needed things, things like that.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to look harder at it because that phraseology on the first page, under 54-28, bottom, "all public rights of way to coastal waters, including but not limited to State Street and Jack's Island Beach access."
I really don't think they do that, but I can't speak for...
No, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for them to do that. I don't think they have the staff and, I mean, it's a, that's a totally, that's a pretty big departure from recreation areas and beaches. This is, we're talking about coastal water access.
We didn't really look at that because we're more focused on Fogland, but if there are other changes, we might as well make them now since it's going to be, you know, advertising and so forth.
So next step on this, just so that I'm clear, is Mr. Tights needs to...
Yeah. Well, I'm glad, I mean, you've asked the questions that I had too. I usually, you know, we try to put up an ordinance. We have it with the language strike through where we're deleting stuff and underline where we're putting it. And I had the same questions about what was going where. I now understand, I think, what should go where, but they've raised further questions, as you said. I mean, simply saying when dogs on a leash are permitted is not enough. They've got to specifically say that they're not permitted and then this time of year, and then they are permitted this time of year. So it sounds like it should come back, it sounds like it should come back to Mr. Ramatowski before, to make sure that we've got the right ideas before it comes back to the council.
All right.
It may be a little premature to schedule it for the public hearing on the 27th because we basically have to have the ad language ready by next week.
Right. And one of the things, again, I just want to be clear is regarding the Harbor Commission as to what their role actually is.
Right.
And, you know, and if they have one, and, you know, would it be in this, you know, regulation?
Right. And I, I mean, my understanding, our Harbor, well...
We'll look into it.
I'll look into it.
While we're talking about it and you're looking into it, can you also advise, just going through this small document, there are a lot of references to prohibitions except for special permit, except by issuance of special permit. And I just noticed no campfires except by special permit. Maybe we include where that special permit comes from? Because I don't know who gives that special permit. I presume it's the fire department, but...
No, I think it's the particular authority that's overseeing the particular area.
Okay. So that beg, well, that's an incorrect question. Yeah. But the thing is too, that there's a section in here from extending bathing hours on Fogland and Grinnell's Beach by special permission from the Recreation Commission. You know, do we have these special permit procedures in place? Or I just, that question comes up because if there's, if we have these things, fires are allowed, you know, if you campfire, if you get a special permit, and someone wants to get a special permit, we have to know what the heck we're doing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the Recreation Commission, I mean, that's part of the things, working on various policies and getting their unwritten rules written. And, you know, I think the problem even there is, I don't know that this is a special permit. It's just a permit, it sounds like.
Or maybe just permission, period. You go to the commission and you say, "Can I do this?"
You want a written permit.
You need a real permit.
You need a permit.
I want to be able to flash my paper.
If it's going to be that ministerial, then it should be like we have for the entertainment. If it's a low-scale entertainment thing, it should just come into the town clerk's office.
Well, right. I mean, in Little Compton at South Shore, you want to have a campfire, you go to, you go to either town hall or the fire department. You get a little paper. They fill it out. You give them ten dollars and you get a permit for the night.
The other issue with camping, though, I got to point out, that it's forbidden also by the zone that Fogland sits in. It's an R-60 zone. Camping is not allowed use in that type of zone.
Overnight camping.
Right. Well, camping, I think it's just, you know...
We allow, we allow daytime RVs to be at the beaches, so.
And there's been arguments by neighbors who have said that that's camping and that shouldn't be allowed, but, you know.
I don't know.
It just, it just feels, I don't know when the last time the language in this chapter was looked at. It feels a bit outdated across the board and probably in need of a facelift.
Again, I think this needs to be looked at. I would suggest that you speak with Mr. Tights and see, you know, where we can make the corrections and clarifications. And I think you need to look at the Harbor Commission to see what powers and rights and so forth they actually have. You know, whether it's just an understanding or is it part of an ordinance somewhere.
Or maybe we should maybe suggest that the administrator yourself send a note to the affected commissions to look at it. Because there's language in here that exceeds Fogland, which is our charge.
Right.
There's stuff about open space and other recreation areas. I think we should send a general notice to them saying, "We're looking at this. Please, you know, review it and see if you want changes or you think changes are needed."
Good idea, Mr. Wojcicki.
It's beyond my pay level.
Sounds like a job for town administrator.
Just send a note.
I'm hearing this issue now too. It seems like there should be one agency in charge of Fogland Beach. And do we really need, do you need the Recreation Commission and the Special Conservation Commission areas for, you know, for one beach plus the, plus the Open Space Commission?
And the Harbor Commission now.
And the, well, I wasn't going to add the Harbor Commission.
Open Space has no area at Fogland. This rule covers them for other areas, but not, this rule is, this section is not just Fogland. It covers all of the open space areas in town. And in fact, it doesn't even cover all the beach rules. There's a section on beaches. I think it's Section 20, where it says, you know, if you're on a beach, you have to be wearing a bathing suit. That's where that appears. It doesn't appear in this section. It appears in that section. So there's a whole section of other rules for beaches. I would want to change that one.
All right. I think, I think Mr. Wojcicki needs to contact all these commissions that are incorporated and find out what they may have and who is responsible for what. I think once we gather it all together, then between the group, the town solicitor, Mr. Otowski, look at whether or not they should be under one general ordinance or just clarify whose role in what.
Because Section 20 talks about the authority of the lifeguard, for example, to direct people to do this or that, which is not in this section.
Yeah. Okay. So is that agreeable with the council?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Micho, Planning Department, requests council public hearing October 27th. That's a busy day regarding redesignation of enterprise zones.
Just, we're not, though, putting, the one that we've just had is not going on October 27th. Just want to clarify that.
No, no. Okay. Ms. Micho is not here?
So the process, Mr. President, for the redesignation of the enterprise zone comes to the council for a public hearing on the merits of the entire designation. And it's also referred to the planning board for an opinion on whether or not it is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So there's two steps. The statute allows those two steps to be staged simultaneously to save time. So that's a request coming from Kate that the process be started by both bodies. Actually, it's here to be referred to one body and schedule your own. The other issue that's here is whether or not one subsection of a census tract that includes South Tibbeton should be included in this zone or not. We have the flexibility under the enterprise zone statute to carve out those census blocks away from census tracts in order to meet the requirements of the program, the goals of the program. My personal view is the economic development tools that are utilized to support South Tibbeton most strongly show up as the Arts and Entertainment District designation at Four Corners, which, where it has been very successful and has, I believe, supported the desired result for that part of town. The enterprise zone program is a completely different approach. It was designed to establish a foothold for businesses in the blighted areas of communities, where many buildings especially are upside down. And you're trying to give people an incentive, not only to hire people in that, to work in that area, but hopefully to hire people who live in that area to work in that area. And my personal judgment is that that is not needed in South Tibbeton and that South Tibbeton is very jealous of its identity and should be allowed to stay as it is. And we should focus this program on central and northern Tibbeton, especially the main road area where this policy tool is still useful.
Anything, council?
I support the recommendation regarding 41601, 02, and then 41701. I think it makes the most sense.
I just have a question. Do we work this in conjunction with Portsmouth?
Yes. Yes. So it's actually their consultant, Bill Clark, who will walk this through the enterprise zone designation process with the state.
Is Mr. Clark a town employee in Portsmouth?
I believe he's a contracted employee, if my memory serves me.
Okay. Just interesting that they have that particular dedicated role of a director of business development.
Not without controversy, councilman.
Do a note. Okay. And I guess we just need to entertain a motion regarding holding the hearing on October 27th. Does that give you enough time, Madam Clark?
You need to take the vote.
Yeah, I think you need to decide tonight whether you want to remove the section or not so we know how to advertise it.
I will entertain a motion to remove Section 417.02 South Tibbeton from the request for a public hearing regarding the enterprise zone. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion regarding holding the hearing on October 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just a question, Madam Clark. Do you have time?
Yes, I think we're trying to schedule a few public hearings on October 27th so we can do an ad for all of them combined.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Leroy Kendricks, Tibbeton-Wastewater, request for health insurance rating for John Lindcourt.
Good evening. This has to do with the transition of the superintendent from the town to the Tibbeton-Wastewater District. And currently, he has health insurance with the town under the Tibbeton Trust. And what we're asking, well, when we went to the Tibbeton Trust for insurance, we do have our insurance with them. Since we only have one full-time employee, one employee that would be getting health and life insurance benefits, we're too small to have, to be rated on our own. And they said that the only way we could transfer the health insurance is if the town would allow the superintendent to be rated with the town. We would get the bills. Nothing would come through the town, but the town would have to allow him to be rated with the town's employees.
Now, John's been on... For the experience.
Yes, for the experience.
Right.
He's been a town employee for 10 years, and we just wanted to be able to carry his health insurance benefit over with him so he wouldn't lose any, any benefits. And we find, we haven't shopped around. We wanted to see if we could just get the transition done. So we don't know how cost-effective, but we're certainly willing to pick up the costs. We've been picking up the costs anyway, so. Just requesting that the town allow that, that rating to happen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tights, but I believe all he's asking is that the entire town employee rating be used because that's, because John falls within it.
Correct.
Other than using just his own experience.
Right.
Right? So they take the average of the whole town and so forth, so, and that determines the cost.
That's correct.
All right, so, okay.
I do have one issue with this. If you recall, when we were, when I was sitting as interim, another separate public utility entity, being North Tibbeton Water, had contacted me to see if they could come under the town's insurance. They could do it, but they'd have to fall the same way. And we had contacted someone, I don't know who we contacted that time, but we did not do, we told them they could not do that. So you do have to be careful. The town has been approached by another, now, they've gone off and got a different insurance because of it, but they, we were approached for it. And we said they were their own entity. They were not under the town's, and we could not take them under us. Just informing you of that.
I just think that the difference between this is that he has been an employee with the town for 10 years and through no fault of his own, you know, the town has transferred wastewater to the Tibbeton-Wastewater District. And so it's a little bit different, I think, than a separate entity not affiliated with the town in any way asks for rating versus someone who's been with the town and has a history with the town. And it's one person who's been, been rated with the town for 10 years.
The one question I have is for town administrator, are there any administrative? I know you said that the bills, they're going to pay the bill, but is there any kind of work that we have to do in-house, whether it's treasurer, administrator, or whatever it is, to facilitate this kind of operation or arrangement or operation?
No, there really isn't. I mean, at this point, we probably had more work to do back when the district was part of a town in terms of managing their income and paying their bills through, you know, enterprise funds, sequestered funds than we do now. You know, what will happen is we'll get the same bill that we've always gotten from the antirocal trust, and we use all the charges that are associated with this employee will be billed out to the wastewater district.
It's my understanding that we would get the bill.
I don't think so, actually. If you're rated with us, so right now, we, it is a very strange area because the town has not been consistent over the years. In some cases, I'm not even entirely sure we...